We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We are returning from closed session. County Council, anything to report from closed session?
No reportable action.
Thank you. All right. Pause briefly for a moment of reflection. All right. Mr. Serena, can you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introduction of new employees. Nope, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move to the chairs. Going to request any deletions, corrections, or additions from the board members to the agenda at this time. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move to our consent agenda. It's a fairly lengthy consent agenda. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman, a constituent has asked me to poll number, item number 20 for clarification. She is here in the audience at this time, and would like to ask a question on item number 20.
Just item 20. Anything else from the board on the consent agenda? Okay, let's go ahead and open the consent agenda up minus item number 20.
Motion approved.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Public comment on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing.
Hi, Linda Sutter, 5th District. I was just wondering, this is for item 20?
No.
Oh!
No, sorry. Everything but item 20. No, no worries if you have anything else. All right. Very good. Seeing no other public comment at this time, we'll go ahead and approve consent agenda items five through 27 minus item 20. Kylie, can you please poll?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Hold on a second.
Hang on. I just had a question. Item 16 and 17, Jim, it calls for us to approve the First Amendment and the Fourth Amendment to this contract. What happened to the Second Amendment and the Third Amendment? Or goes out?
Okay, so there's 16, 17, and 18 are all related to the Hurdy Gurdy Creek Bridge. Item 16 is the construction management contract, which is with Ghirardelli Associates, and that's for everything after we awarded the construction contract for onsite. Item 17 is the Fourth Amendment to the design services, so that is before we went to construction, getting the plans together as well as changes to the design that happened during construction. And then item 18 is the actual construction contract.
Right.
So previously amendments two and three, one, two, and three came before you for the previous contract.
All right. I would just, I guess I didn't read that closely enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Resina. Appreciate it.
My.
No worries, Supervisor. All right. Bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Excuse me, except I need to recuse myself on item number 27.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. Let's, we've got a little bit of time, so let's go ahead and bring item 20 back. Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, constituent asked me for clarification on the redacting of certain public information, and Sutter is here. She can explain your question clearly and get an explanation.
Good morning.
Thank you, Linda Sutter, 5th District. So as I reviewed the document, it was redacted entirely, so there's no transparency with this, and I want to know what government code allows you to redact public information in regards to that matter.
I'm not familiar with that, but thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
I, I mean, I can understand if you don't want to put someone's name out there, at least have the instrument number or some way to look it up to see that there's nothing shady going on. That's, and so you need to have something to, so I can look it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item number 20? No, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Gitlin?
Well, can we get clarification from our council on the redacting of this information? Is this public record and protected under this redaction function, Elizabeth?
So we haven't received a public records request for this item, so we would, if that comes in, we would need to deal with that when it comes in. The Public Records Act has specific exemptions in it, and it also has a catch-all exemption. Sometimes the releases of liens have to do with who was on certain programs such as welfare and welfare to work, and those things can be protected. We haven't done an analysis of this record request because we haven't seen one at this time, and so we would do that if, when and if it came.
So if Mrs. Sutter chooses to contact your office for a FOIA request, you would consider that at the time?
Generally, the person requesting the records would make that request to the department who has the records. We don't keep these records in our office, and then those offices run them through our office to make sure they're releaseable or receive that information.
Mrs. Sutter, are you satisfied with the answer? Would you come up here? We can hear you, so you're recorded.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I will go to.
Department of Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services.
She's here in the audience also.
I'll come to your office, Heather, and request that information. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead with our timed agenda item for 1005, which is public comment on anything. Oh, sorry. We do need a motion on that.
I'll proffer that motion at this time.
We have a motion in a second. Kylie, please poll the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. Back to item, public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments as the board takes up that matter. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Any public comment this morning? Please.
Good morning, board of supervisors, and I want to wish you all Merry Christmas because the season is upon us. I think that we've had a tough year this year. I think that we can do a little bit better next year, and I hope that that holds true. Laurie, I'd like to commend you on your work for the letter to Wood, Congressman?
Assemblyman.
Assemblyman Wood, thank you, in regards to the healthcare situation with Sutter Coast Hospital. I hope that something can be resolved with that because, you know, as we grow older, we don't have the means to take care of ourselves currently with our medical situation here. So thank you with that.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Let's move forward with our budget transfer items. We have budget transfer item 12-01 in the amount of $4,620. The building inspection unit to cover plan review fees is requested by the Director of Community Development. And that is our only budget transfer item.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Open it up, public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, we have item number 29. Approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter addressed to the California Department of Transportation proposing the renaming of Congressman Don Claussen Highway as the Congressman Don Claussen Memorial Highway as requested by Supervisor Berkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is self-evident, and it also ends a lot of confusion at the beginning and the end of the bypass, that long bypass. It has Congressman Don Claussen Highway. Anybody coming into this county might think that Don Claussen, who served us for 20 years, is still our congressman, and actually, he's not our congressman, and this ends that confusion.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments at this time from the board?
Yeah, you know. Chairman.
Hold on a second. This, hold on a second. Supervisor Hemmingson?
You want to listen to me first, or you want me to listen to you? You know, Don Claussen, who, you know, I've known the family for years and years, and matter of fact, I went to his memorial service, and I think he was a good congressman for the county. But I have a little issue with this particular thing in only naming the one highway after him when there are a lot of things named for him, so I don't know why we're picking up this one. This one's really not even in Delmar County. We have a terminal that's named after him. I know there's an overpass down in, by Santa Rosa, down at Roanoke Park, that's named after him, so I don't know why we're, either why we're stopping at this particular item, you know, why we're not maybe doing more of them, or really why we're doing it at all. I mean, we've got the Collier Tunnel. Senator Collier hasn't been alive for some time, but we don't change it to the Collier Memorial Tunnel, so I don't know that there's confusion there. I don't know where that's all coming from. You know, people should know who their congressman is in the first place. I'm not trying to say anything against Don Claussen because he was a great guy for this county. He's the reason that I have a pilot's license. He started the aviation program. He's known as Mr. Aviation, and I have a lot of respect for him. But him being a Republican, I would think he would want his tax dollars used to their, to their best, and I'm not sure that in changing this is using, using the tax dollar. I'm not really against it. I don't want to say that I'm against it, but I, you know, it is named for him, and there's a lot of other things that are named for him, and I don't know why we're just going halfway. So I think there should be some more research done on other, maybe other items that need to be changed, and then maybe a cost that's associated with it.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Supervisor Berkowitz, what's the cost to make this?
Really, I don't know. Their Caltrans handles this whole thing.
Is there a cost?
So really, it's their expense. There's no expense to the county that I know of.
Okay, you don't, because I've gone through these signs before. We put on the veteran signs, and it, there was, I think there was no cost borne to the county at our three portals, so I'll make that motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign and send the letter addressed to Transportation Processing for the renaming of Congressman Don Claussen Highway to Congressman Don Claussen Memorial Highway as requested by Supervisor Berkowitz.
And I'll second that.
Public comment?
Now, Mr. Chairman, members of board, I happen to be at that dedication of Don Claussen. Gerald Cochran, former assessor, Delmar County.
Good morning, Jerry.
I was at that dedication for the highway when Don and Ollie came up, and I too was in the, in the flight program that Don had started, and he was our congressman for 20 years, and between he and Alan Cranston, they gave us two pots of money. The first pot of money, just so you know, of 120 million went 60-40, and it came into the wrong fund in the state of California, so we went back to Congress, or to Congressman Claussen and Senator Cranston to earmark that money for the bypass of 120 million, and they did. And maybe we should also ask for Senator Cranston to be on that, on that thing, but, and I drive up and down 101 quite often, and I recognize these signs, and I was there when Don, Don accepted the dedication of that, and I thought it was quite an honor for him. And I think that by changing it to memorial is similar to the current requirements of Caltrans, is they have to be deceased before they'll, they'll name a highway after anyone. And I'm involved in another little project that I'll be bringing to you the first, first of January. But I think, rightfully so, you know, either way, that the name should stay the same because he was alive when we dedicated the highway. Now, if, if there was a new segment of highway, then, then I could understand why we wouldn't do the memorial the same way as Supervisor Hemmingson pointed out on Randy Collier when he, when we dedicated the tunnel. And I don't know how many of you remember. I know Jerry remembers.
I was there.
You were there? My father did the food that time, but the old highway going across, and you'll see pictures of that, and it was always kind of a venture for the kids in the car to get sick. And they did, believe me. But either way, but I just, I want to point out that, that for us who attended that dedication, we like the idea. It's Don Claussen Highway. Now to say it's something different, hmm, a little tough. Thank you.
Any further public comment? We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Berkowitz?
Thank you. You know, this is just mainly a clarification, like we have, for example, Mr. Biladi, who has a memorial highway. Most of these are in recognition that they did something while they were alive. It's no different than any of the other memorial highways that we have. True, it's not in Delmar County. It's about 500 feet. It's south of the Delmar County line, but I think anybody that comes up here basically can go to take a look at that, and they're going to say, well, Congressman Claussen's their congressman. I just think it's a clarification. It's no big deal, but I think it's a recognition that this is a congressman that is being memorialized, and he's done some good for this county.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, and I, and I agree with what Jerry Cochran said, that, you know, normally if a person is deceased, they name something after him. They call it a memorial highway, or a memorial bridge, or a memorial this, or, but when that person's alive, they, they don't, I guess I don't know that they've, that I've ever seen a point where they've changed the name from a dedication of the man's name to a memorial thing. I could be wrong, but I guess my, one of my other concerns is that we're not, if this is, if this is the proper thing to do, and I don't know that it is, that, that we're leaving out all the other things that he did, because he did a lot of other things with transportation, including our terminal building, which I would think is in Delmar County, that if you were going to name it for some sort of clarification or recognition, that that would be the first place that you would start, as well as, you know, as, you know, other things. I'm sure that I've seen other signs other than there, that overpass in, in, down in Sonoma County, but anyway, I just have some concerns.
I will allow this briefly. Briefly.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing is, that isn't in Delmar County. That's all in Humboldt County, so I don't know why we're really involving ourselves, and it's a Humboldt County issue, not Delmar. Sorry, Bob.
That's okay.
Thank you.
You know, he was our congressman for over 20 years. He served on this particular body, Delmar Board of Supervisors, and he established some programs that were vital to this county at the time, especially the aviation program, which a lot of people took advantage of. It's just another way to honor the man.
No, he's passed.
And if I could, if we were, if we were talking about having a Don Claussen Day, I'd be 100% behind it. You know, I just don't know that this creates any more recognition for him. I think, and we spent way too much time on it already, you know, and I didn't mean to get controversial about the whole thing. I just, I just don't know where it stops if you're going to start doing, you know, changing these names, and, you know, I don't know if that means that in all the maps, they have to change all the names. I don't know what the, the actual cost is. You act like, oh, it's no big deal. It didn't cost us anything to put up the signs for the veterans. Yeah, it probably didn't cost us anything. Somebody had to pay for them. Somebody had to do it, and I don't know what all the other costs are, the hoops that have to be jumped through. And like I say, I am, I am a fan of Don Claussen, you know, and always have been. I know, like I said, I know the family, know, I've known the family for a long time, and I don't want it to be construed as anything against Don Claussen. It's absolutely not the case. I'm just, this whole process of what we're doing here is, is what I'm having an issue with.
Supervisor Cowan?
Supervisor Cochran just brought up now a question to me. I think I want clarification. Maybe, Bob, you can check into this, and we, if he's saying that the naming, they're memorials when they're done after they die, and they're not memorials because the project was done while they're alive, I'd like to know if that is the case and how, does that make sense, what I'm asking? If, because I've never heard that before, and if that is, I mean, that's a big recognition. This is something that happened while he was alive. We wouldn't want to disrupt, disrupt that. So maybe we can find out. I would feel more comfortable with that, knowing why we're changing. And I believe it's just a letter we're sending to Caltrans. Caltrans can tell us, you know, we don't want to deal with it after the letter, letter is sent, or they could say, this is Humboldt County. Why are you asking? You know, we don't know. So I don't think the letter is harmful in any way, but I would like more clarification.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yeah, I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time on this. I'm agreeing with the supervisors or Hemmingson that we've spent too much time on this already. Let's just have an up or down vote and be done with it.
I'd like to see it tabled, so I would make a motion to table until we can get more information.
I'll second that. And Ken Jay, can you get some clarification on that for us, please?
Could you give me a little feedback on what clarification is it costing? Is it the process?
I want to know why they choose the names. I want to know if it's a memorial highway and it's named that way because the project was done after their death, and if they have a name without the word memorial in it, it's because it's a project that they completed while they were with us.
Well, I can give you my understanding right now, but I will look into it. There is a process through Caltrans, and obviously, if it's a memorial highway, it is after somebody's, is posthumous. The process also goes through the legislature, which is different than through Caltrans. Obviously, they can name it whatever they want, and then that direction goes down. The, in their handbook, when they talk about their signs, they talk about not wanting to do certain things, but they don't adhere to their own handbook. So I will do some more research and try to get some information if that's the direction of the board, but I'll, I'll go to, you know, the question of cost. Did you want me to look at that, too? I'm not sure if they'll give me a number or not, but it's up, and the board can give that direction.
Sure. So we'll take up the second motion first, which is a motion to table. Kylie, please poll the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
No.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to item number two, which is open the public hearing and introduce ordinance by title only. At the conclusion of the public hearing, close the public hearing and direct staff to return with the ordinance to the board for adoption and transmit it to Coastal Commission for certification at the regularly scheduled meeting on January 9, 2018, as requested by Assistant Director of the Community Development. Good morning, Randy. How are you?
Morning. Well, how are you?
Excellent, thank you. Brought a presentation with you today, I see.
Yeah, and I understand the board does have a packed agenda today, so I'll try and zip through this.
Thank you.
If there's any questions, feel free to interject, and I'll do my best to address those. The item actually includes two different issues. Perhaps it would be better to look at maybe the simpler of the two issues first, which has to do with increasing the maximum residential building height within the coastal zone. I'm sure the board recalls, this actually dates back to late 2015, when the board took up the consideration of variance application from a property owner in the Smith River area. They had applied for a building permit to increase, or pardon me, to construct a residence that would have exceeded the maximum residential building height under the, under the zoning regulations. As a result of the denial of the variance, the board gave direction to staff to look at the relevance of the building height, the applicability, the efficacy of that building height within the coastal zone. So staff did look at the, that particular issue, took it through the planning commission. A number of different alternatives were identified, you know, ranging from fairly exotic alternatives where there would have been graduated building heights back from the coast, to, you know, a fairly straightforward change in ordinance would be just a simple increase from 25 to 30, 30 feet in the residential building height. The planning commission ultimately recommended that they go with the simpler of the option, which would have, again, just simply increased the building height to 30 feet. You know, again, however, there was some analysis that led to that ultimate recommendation. Took it to the Board of Supervisors in 2016. We received direction as staff to put together an LCP amendment application that was submitted to the Coastal Commission. The LCP amendment application would have changed the implement, implementing part of the LCP, which is Title 21, would have increased that height limit to 30 feet. On review by Coastal Commission staff, a number of issues were identified from their perspective that they took objection to. They basically took the application and determined that additional information would be needed. We got them the additional information. They still have issue with it, so I believe that two or three Coastal Commission hearings ago, they actually extended their timeline out for here to consider and to work through those issues with the knowledge that in the interim, we were, we were developing a revised ordinance that hopefully would address some of those LCP issues that the commission staff were concerned with. And so over the course of probably the last seven or eight months, we've been in discussions with Coastal Commission staff on how the proposal could be strengthened, improved, perhaps from their perspective, and what we've ultimately settled on would be essentially additional provisions in the Title 21 that would provide for an analytical process whenever a coastal development permit application is filed in certain situations. Specifically, if an applicant were to come forward with a coastal development permit application to construct a residence over 25 feet, and if that project were to be identified to be located in a visual, visual resources area under the LCP, which there's different portions. portions of the county that are considered to be more significant from a visual resources perspective than others, if such a project were to come forward as part of the review process, the ERC would have to engage in this analysis, and that's laid out in your board report. There's a number of different steps that they would be looking at on those types of applications. And through the course of those conversations with Coastal, they seem to be okay with this proposal. I would point out that the proposal wouldn't be applicable if somebody were to be proposing a structure under 25 feet in these areas. And so, you know, we do maintain essentially the same review process for projects that are consistent with our code as it's currently written. This would just be applicable to these new projects that go within that 25 to 30-foot height limit in these visual resource areas. So again, the, this item is going to also include a discussion on a second topic, which perhaps might invoke a little more interest from the public. I don't know if there's the interest on the part of the board to get into the weeds on the increase in the residential building height. I know it's something that you've been interested in getting done for a while, and I think we're finally to that point where the Coastal Commission's going to sign off on it. This is just one step in the process. So this would be the introduction of that particular ordinance. It'd have to come back to the board for adoption. I'm proposing we take that up in January, if it's okay with the board. If there's not any questions or interest from the public on the increase in residential building heights, we can get into the second item, which again, I think is going to maybe be a little more interesting.
I want to ask about this.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Isn't this issue coming out of a gentleman who came in to ask to build a two-story home?
Yes.
Which would be 30 feet, and he was turned down.
That's correct.
All right. So this is where the genesis is coming from. So really, the difference between five feet, 25 to 30, really is a first story to a second story. So this is kind of a big deal, to allow it to go up to 30 feet. There are exceptions around the county, because we certainly see them, where the coastal zone, I see them on Pebble Beach Tribe, there are a lot of 30-plus foot homes.
Sure.
Higher than that. What's the reasoning behind that? Why are these exceptions, and the rest of the county happens to be in the coastal zone, up till now, has been 25 feet?
The height limit for residences in the coastal zone is 25 feet. Any structures, you mentioned Pebble Beach Tribe, much of Pebble Beach Tribe is actually out of the coastal zone, and so the residential building height in that area is 35 feet. There are areas within coastal, different zone districts, commercial zone districts, agricultural zone districts, where the residential, where the building height would be higher, and in some cases, none. But within the residentially zoned areas within coastal, the building height is definitely 25 feet.
Any other comments from Supervisor at this time? Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing for public comment. Please.
So there's going to be a new casino built up off in the Humboldt Road area, right? So are they going to be following that same rule for 30 feet? Because it's going to be a big hotel?
It's a good question. I could address that for you. Basically, it's federal land, so Coastal Commission's wouldn't have any regulation or jurisdiction over those lands, even though they did go into negotiations with the tribe prior when the land went into trust. Any other public comment? Please. Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Teresa Frary, and I'm a two-year resident of beautiful Crescent City, originally hailing from the University of California at Santa Barbara, 1983, where I studied classical rhetoric. And one of the things we learned is how to make connections. And what I'm about to say may seem terribly tangential and not so connected, but there's a dear older man whose birthday is today, and so I would like to let the public record acknowledge the birthday of Daniel Robert Honeywell,
This is tangential to this agenda item?
Whose near half-century of successes now looks forward to his two legacy grandchildren, who will continue in all hope grandpa's love of the North Coast land and people. And part of this need for accessory dwelling units involves the younger generation, and for stability, for federal funding of our high schools. We need to kind of make the train even before the need for the train, so to speak. When we have a stable population, we will see social problems lessen. We will see stronger communities, and we will be more viable, I think, in our North Coast values. So I just wanted the public record to show Dan's birthday today, and hopefully, we can provide him with that transcript soon. And note that this isn't just for the homeless, so to speak. It's for all of us, this issue. It's a very important issue, and I respect and honor your thoughts.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Appreciate your public comment. Any additional public comment at this time?
Hi, I'm going to get to the ADU part of the presentation. You might want to let the public know. In terms of public comment, that's still coming.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question on this. Are you closing?
No, I wanted to get to the public comment, and then I...
To Randy on this issue.
And then you can open it up to Randy. Please. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
Good morning. Jim Nelson. I read through this 30-some-page ordinance that the state put together on ADUs. My understanding from what the state has put together, primarily if it's a granny unit or 500-square-foot unit within a residence, it has to be owner-occupied. If it's a separate unit, it does not have to be owner-occupied from what the state has put together. I know that they've given separate counties, each county, the right to make changes or whatever they want to do. Also, there's no extra charge for sewer and water for hooking up to it. But I never found anywhere in on a second unit if you could put a separate meter, power meter, unless I fell asleep while I was reading it and missed that. So I would think if you had a second unit, that a person would want to know how much power that person's using versus their power. So that might be something that we want to look at. Another question is, I don't know why they would want to deviate that far from what the state has put together as far as making it all mandatory that an owner has to be living on the property to put in a second unit. Who's going to look over that as far as the county? How are they going to make sure that the owner is living in one of those residences? They've got mobile homes out on properties that were put in for mom and dad, and they died many years ago, and the people didn't come in and tell the county that, hey, mom and dad died. They've rented them. Unfortunately, this thing with the state, it's mandatory that it has to be done, so there's not much we can do about it. I think there's going to be some upset people that live in a nice neighborhood that now they're going to have rentals all around them, and there's no say-so. I mean, they have no say about it, because it circumcises restrictions, covenants, and special districts. So what can you do? But the bottom line is, if we enforce an owner to live in the property, how are we going to check on that? So that's my big question.
Thank you for your public comment. Mr. Hooper, can you please return to the dice? And I'm not going to close public comment yet, just in case.
Yeah, I apologize. These two items were put together. I didn't mean for there to be confusion related to that. The first item, you know, to be clear, was specific to residential building heights. I do have a quick PowerPoint presentation, which I think will probably address some of these issues, so we can jump right in.
Just a quick question. It's not, which one is which? 1802, is that the height, the height limit? And 1803 is, you haven't presented yet, the accessory dwelling?
No, we kind of took those backwards. 1803 is the residential building heights.
Okay, thank you. That's all my head.
Thank you, Supervisor.
So since we started talking about ADUs, the California Legislature, and like I said, I've got a PowerPoint. We'll try and zip through this, but I did want to kind of lay some of the groundwork for where things started to where we are today. The California Legislature, for many, many years, has been interested in increasing access to affordable housing, dating back to the early 80s into the 90s. Various pieces of legislation have come through, which created statute that put requirements on cities and counties to actually make provisions for second units in order to further that goal of providing for affordable housing. In 2003, there was quite notable legislation that was passed into law, which took away with the discretionary oversight that cities and counties could exercise with respect to permitting second units. As a result of that 2003 legislation, our non-coastal zoning code was amended, and currently, as written, if someone has a parcel that qualifies, meaning it's double the minimum parcel size, it has the potential to be subdivided, has, you know, availability of parking onsite sewer disposal if it's needed. We would be permitting that through just a ministerial building permit, as opposed to a use permit. Interestingly, and kind of getting back to some of the difficulties with coastal, Title 21, our coastal zoning ordinance doesn't actually reflect what is currently required under law, and we do require a use permit for that second unit-type situation within the coastal zone. This would correct that, the proposed ordinance. But more recently, in 2016, the legislature got even more aggressive, and they did pass three separate pieces of legislation, which were signed into law that are collectively referred to as the ADU statute. ADU is an acronym for accessory dwelling units, kind of doing away with the definition, or what we used to refer to as second units. They're now referred to as accessory dwelling units. These laws did go into effect January 1st of 2017, and so technically, they're in effect currently. And the way the law is written is that if you have an existing second unit ordinance that's in conflict with the new ADU statute, that that ordinance is null and void. And so many jurisdictions were caught off guard. You know, this did come up late in the legislative process, and they've been scrambling to put together ordinances over the course of this year that are in conformance with the ADU statute. So in order to comply with this new law, we in CDD, we've put together a proposal that we've discussed with HCD, we've discussed with the Coastal Commission, we've discussed with all the different stakeholders, and it appears to be consistent with allowable reasonable restrictions, which there's very limited things you can do, but certain reasonable restrictions can be included in a local ordinance that preserve some level of local control over the creation of these ADUs. The ordinance is specific in that it would allow for the creation of either attached or detached ADUs. A detached ADU would be, you know, obviously, a little apartment or something on someone's property that meets the standards, and an attached ADU might be the conversion of space within a garage, or the creation of an apartment above a garage. And there's going to be minor variations in terms of how attached and detached ADUs are going to be treated, but again, the process will be a ministerial process, so those regulations will be imposed through the issuance of a building permit. And just to be clear, ADUs and the provisions for the creation of ADUs is specific to residentially zoned areas, so this wouldn't be applicable in ag zones, and commercial zones, and TPZ lands, and things like that. And so I've heard from the public a number of times of, you know, why have any reasonable restrictions? Why not just revert to the state law? And I think it's important to recognize that counties plan based off of their general plan with implementation vis-à-vis the zoning. Those values are identified through a pretty significant process when the general plan is adopted, similarly with the local coastal program, and it's intended to recognize and respect the community values and priorities. And so while the ADU statute, as I say in the presentation, in many ways supersedes those local zoning regulations, there are certain reasonable restrictions that can be imposed that relate back to the values that have been identified by the community through the general plan. And so, in our ordinance, what type of reasonable restrictions are we talking about? Attached, ADUs may not exceed 50% of the living area of the primary residence. They would also be limited to the maximum building height of the primary residence to which the ADU is attached. Detached ADUs, and again, let's get back to the definition of an ADU. It's an accessory building. Under our current zoning regulations, accessory buildings are limited to 1,200 square feet in size and 16 feet in height. The 1,200-square-foot limitation is also part of the ADU statute. However, as ADUs, to reiterate, are accessory buildings, there would be a provision where an applicant could go through a conditional use permit process if they requested to exceed those limitations. That would come down to neighborhood compatibility. There would be a public hearing, the neighbors would be notified, and everybody would have an opportunity to participate in that conversation. One, parking space is required for each ADU unless there's public transportation nearby. In addition, as part of the building permit process, connections to onsite utilities would need to be reviewed by a licensed professional in order to, for example, demonstrate that the sewer disposal system can support the additional demand on the system created by the ADU. If the ADU is connected to public utilities, the fees to connect based on statute would need to be proportional to the service provided, so they wouldn't be paying whatever the flat connection rate would be to the city, for example, to connect to the public sewer system. The city would need to look at their fee schedule and figure out what they consider to be proportional based off of that service. As was noted by a previous speaker, one of the reasonable restrictions that we're suggesting be included would be that the owner of the parcel must occupy either the primary residence or the ADU on the parcel. And finally, the ERC and staff recommendation is that ADUs not be permitted in high or very high fire hazard severity zones. The planning commission, as you see in your board report, suggested that the ordinance include the ability for ADUs to be established within those fire-prone areas. Some points to consider, urban, suburban development is pushing further out of cities into rural areas, and as a result, the number of buildings and homes that are damaged as a result of accidental and natural forest fires has increased drastically. This has resulted in millions of dollars in damages, and damages evidenced by recent fires in the North Bay and currently in Southern California. Two versions of the ordinances are being proposed. You have both of those versions in front of you. I mentioned that the planning commission recommendation would allow for ADUs to be constructed in those fire-prone areas, and I do know that a potential compromise could exist when you consider attached and detached accessory dwelling units, and possibly making provisions so that a detached may be restricted within those fire-prone areas, but an attached ADU could be permitted. I think I've kind of touched on most of these points. I would emphasize with respect to the provisions for there to be a tenancy requirement, that we do feel, as the Community Development Department, that a tenancy requirement is important to maintain established values that have been adopted by the Board of Supervisors in the general plan, particularly single-family residential zone districts, but perhaps even multifamily residential zone districts. I did put a query to the California County Planning Directors Association, just to kind of get some feedback on how other communities are handling that tenancy requirement, and it appears that most jurisdictions are including a tenancy requirement. There are some that aren't, but they're definitely in the minority. And this is enforced through a deed restriction at the time of a building permit application, which essentially put the owner of the property on notice that this is a requirement of getting an ADU, that there'd be a tenancy provision included. I think that's it. If there's any questions on the ADU, I'm certainly available.
Randy, to clarify, this is just for the local coastal plan at this time.
The ADU ordinance, there's, this is really complicated because of the wrinkles with the planning commission on the fire issue. You technically have four ordinances on this, two in coastal, two in non-coastal.
Okay, so I'm corrected.
Yeah, there would be Title 20 and Title 21.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Cowan?
As you know, I personally have been dealing with somebody who's had issues with this. You know, they've come in and they've just popped a double wide at their kitchen window, and, which is allowed by the state. And I heard now, so I guess my question would be, that was brought in as the ADU, but now they're making it... they're making it the primary. Are they able to do that? Is that something that we're going to allow?
Yeah, the situation that you're speaking of, there was an existing residence on the property that would have qualified as an ADU based on its limited size and footprint, small cabin, I don't know, eight or 900 square feet. And so, yeah, and the new unit, they've identified as the primary residence on the property, and they've re-designated the existing smaller cabin as the ADU. It does qualify based on the provisions of what's required for an ADU, and so they did have that ability. And under our ordinance, people would still have that ability to re-designate existing units to do a flip flop.
Okay, so they can flip flop?
Yep.
And then the state says that they don't want the ADUs in high fire, which is pretty much our whole county, a good portion of it, correct?
We've got some mapping that I think maybe illustrates where the limitations are going to be with respect to the map, with respect to the fire mapping. I should point out, yes, much of the county is high and very high fire hazard, but much of the county is also timberland, public ownership. And so the application of this ordinance would be specific to residentially zoned areas that are, that have that high and very high. And if you look at it on a map on a countywide basis, it's not a big area, but it's, it is a, it will definitely create some challenges on permitting ADUs in those areas if the board wants to go in that direction.
Okay, all right, okay.
So Randy, I know we've discussed this quite a bit, and the state oftentimes passes legislation that's a one size fits all. And this is one of those times that this one came and bit a county that really didn't need an ADU type legislation, because there wasn't really a shortage up here to speak of. Are you hearing any rumblings from any of the other counties when you talk to their community development departments on how there could be maybe a rural fix to this in the legislation?
Nothing's been put forward legislatively, but I do think that would be a potential solution. I mean, you could do things like relate this to existing data that's available through the Housing Community Development Department with respect to those housing shortages and make the law applicable to those areas. But you're right, the way the law is written, the way it's in effect now is one size fits all. To answer the question of whether there's any interest on the part of, you know, planning directors and community development departments to change the standard in rural areas, I haven't heard any discussion about that, but I would imagine an organization like RCRC might be a good place to forward that idea.
You know, and Supervisor Calhoun, I know you'll be with Assemblyman Wood today, but I would take him out to that example as a prime example of how this legislation does not fit a rural community like ours. I mean, that, to me, was a travesty for the neighborhood, and I understand how the residents of that neighborhood are upset about it, but man.
Well, but I also think we have realtors in this audience right now that like the idea. I don't know, I'm hearing both sides. It first came to me with a very irate friend, and I see her point. It's ridiculous. You live in a certain area and you pay a certain amount to live where you're at, and to have someone be able to pop a double wide five feet from your kitchen window is not okay. It's just not. But, you know, as realtors, I, you know, I think sometimes we feel that there is a shortage. It certainly is nowhere near the shortages they have in LA, and this is why this was designed. It's for more of those urban areas that just really do not have enough housing. So I see where you're coming from, Chair. We need to find a balance. This is definitely legislation that we need to make sure works for our community in that. And I don't know how to put boundaries on that to stop what has tragically happened, you know? I don't know. I worry about, you know, we all use septic, a good portion of our community use septic, and I'm worried about the systems that are in there designated for single families that now all of a sudden we have two units on. There's just, there's a ripple effect, and I think we really need to look at it. And I think, for me, I had no idea this all passed in January. All of a sudden in March, somebody said something, you sent me that packet to Mr. Nelson's house, and it was like, wow. So anyways, I'm glad you're working on it, and I think we need to continue to work on it.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, Randy, you touched on the fact that if somebody was going to build an ADU, they would have a deed restriction. What about pre-existing conditions? What about those units that are already out there? Is there going to be some way to address that ownership portion?
Well, presumably, all of those units that are out there are going to be illegal because they were constructed in conflict with our current zoning regulations. Or maybe they were just created, you know, so long ago that zoning didn't apply when they were first constructed. But I think it gets back to their status. If it was a legally constructed unit, you know, they might be able to qualify under some sort of a non-conforming use. But again, by and large, at least in my experience, from what I've seen, most of those units out there, you know, were converted probably illegally, you know, maybe first developed as a shop or an office. And then at some point in time, maybe the property changed hands, the subsequent people weren't aware of the zoning regulations, and they added a kitchen, put in a bathroom, you know, that sort of thing. And, you know, now you've got an illegal second residence. But under the ADU statute, they would be able to come in and retroactively go through a permit process to legalize. That might be the best way to address those situations.
Supervisor Gittlen.
Randy, let me just get some clarity and understanding. Someone has a 2,400 square foot home in Ayutee. They can build up to 1,200 square foot accessory dwelling unit. Would it need another septic field? Would it need another well? The owner occupancy situation passes on. What happens as it become a future rental? And just those quick questions. And then what's the net benefit for the county? How does the county benefit financially from this?
Well, a couple of things there. On the septic question, you know, one of the provisions that I touched on was that we're going to require a report from a licensed engineer whenever an ADU is proposed, if somebody is on a septic system, to show that it can handle that additional demand. The issue of, you know, proximity to adjacent wells is going to be something that we'll have to look at from a health and safety perspective, probably through the Environmental Health Division and building working together, you know, making sure that if a second septic system needs to be put on a property, that's not going to create issues for the people who may have a well next door. So those are issues that, you know, the ordinance addresses, I think, the best that it can, but there's going to be a lot of implementation things that, you know, we're going to probably run into that we may need to revisit the ordinance, we may need to develop policies to support the ordinance. And, you know, those will be things we'll be talking about moving forward. On the benefits to the county from an economic standpoint, you know, if you're adding value to property, the assessor's office is going to be picking that up as they do with all improvements through, you know, correspondence between our two offices whenever someone pulls a permit, and whatever value that adds to the property, I would imagine would be assessed and taxed accordingly.
And to be clear, this isn't, this isn't just modular homes. This is a stick home. This is an actual permanent structure, not a modular trailer that can be moved off the property becomes unsightly. So you're talking about a permanent fixture.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Well, for clarification, the example that I think Supervisor Calhoun was talking about was a modular.
Yes, that was a modular that became the primary residence, leaving the cabin as the ADU. But absolutely, it could be manufactured homes, it could be stick built, it could be cabins, it could be the conversion of space within garages, as I mentioned.
And arguably, from a perspective of maybe that resident who now has a modular sitting five feet from their kitchen window, their property value is now much lower in this case, they feel. So there's two edges to this sword. You might increase the property value in one parcel that hasn't been reassessed under property for quite some time, and yet lower the value of your adjacent neighbors who are looking to sell.
Sure.
So this is a double edged sword. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, there was just one other thing on this portion. If, this says that you can't be any higher than the, than the primary residence if you're attaching. So if you wanted to attach above the garage and you were on a single story dwelling, you could not do that?
No, not the height of the structure, the height of what's allowable under the zoning.
I got you, okay. I misunderstood, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, thank you, Randy, appreciate it. I'm gonna reopen public comment. Please approach the dais, state your name for the record. Try to keep it to three minutes or less.
Good morning. My name is Roy Tedson, and I'm one of the few people who grew up here and was able to come back home. When I first came back to Delano County, I worked for the planning department, and was honored to be able to serve this board and the planning commission. And one of the things that was very disconcerting to me was the fact that over 80% of the county at that time, of course, this was back in 1974, was zone unclassified. Was a very bad situation for Delano County because we were in the throes of development at the time, and there were basically no regulation. So I'd had some grantsmanship background, went to work and was able to get some HUD funding, and we were able to hire Ernie Perry, and of course, the rest is history. We developed the general plan, we did some zoning, and Delano County took a step forward. And so this to me, though, and when I'm sitting here listening to this, it sounds like we're taking a huge, several steps backwards. And I think it's incumbent upon our board and our planning commission to take a look at implementing this statute that's mandated. It seems like we're always being mandated up here in extreme northwest corner of the state of California. We need to take a look at implementing this ordinance and do it right, and do it so that it has a positive effect on the residents of Delano. You know, all realtors, some of my counterparts think maximum utility is the best thing for any piece of land. But I was here during a time when people just did what they wanted, and it certainly wasn't good for Delano County. I'm happy to see that development is regulated and controlled and that there's some consistency. Unplanned development is really not positive for Delano County. A prime example of this is, and everybody's always talking about the need for low cost housing. All one would have to do is take a look at some of the recent low cost housing developments. I was chatting with Doug Plack, and he told me that as soon as the certificate of occupancy was issued for one of our recent low cost housing developments, he was afraid to send his officers over there after dark. There were drugs being sold in the middle of the playground. Not a real positive development for Delano County. So as we plan, let's do it right.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a question for Roy. Roy, can I just ask you a quick question?
Supervisor Gittlen.
So I'm sensing your caution on this ordinance. So give us some direction on what you'd like to see amended from.
Well, we have very capable planning staff, and what we need to do is we need to take the state statute, read through it, see where our board has some ability to go ahead and impose some regulations that are applicable to rural properties. You know, the statute says that we have to do this, but if we have to do it, let's do it right.
So you feel it just needs additional study? You're seeing 16 feet in height, you're seeing no more than 1,200 feet setbacks that might be an issue?
The trailer that you're talking about, excuse me, I know you're supposed to call them modular housing, but they're trailers to me.
I said trailer, by the way.
We have setback requirements in rural residential zones. They should basically have to adhere to the same setbacks that are required of any other property that's being developed. I haven't read through, like Jim, I haven't read through the statute, but I'm sure that somebody who knows what they're doing can read through it and see if we have some latitude to make those impositions.
Thank you, Mr. Tedson. And as you suggested, we do have very competent staff looking into this, and this is a public hearing, and we'll have another bite at this apple, first meeting in January. Is there any other public comment at this time? All right, we're gonna go ahead and bring it back to the board. Thank you for, the public comment period's closed. Mr. Nelson.
Jim Nelson. Attaching a unit to the main residence, would that become, still be a separate unit?
We'll address, yeah, we'll, thank you for those comments. We'll address that with staff, later, Mr. Nelson. Thank you. Thank you for the robust discussion on this board. This is something that has obviously come very quickly to us. Thank you, staff, for paying a great deal of attention to it. I know you're getting hit by a lot of county residents with these concerns. Obviously, this is a fix for what we addressed last year, but at the same time, there's some other baggage that we need to address. Really appreciate the comments from our audience. We do need to pay attention to this because, in my opinion, this does hurt a lot of property value around here. But we'll keep the public hearing open. Randy, you gonna finalize this? Sorry about that, didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, that's okay. Just one of the things that we were requesting was some direction on the two different iterations. We've got the planning commission version, we've got the ERC staff version, and then, you know, finally, like I said, there potentially could be some compromise or in the middle, but with the expectation we'll be coming back to the board with the ordinance for adoption in January. I'd like to get some direction.
Can we extend it past that date if we feel necessary?
Absolutely, we can push it out if we need to.
Because I don't want to feel rushed on this. I mean, these ordinances sit with us for quite some period of time, and in this case, this is rather complicated. It's addressing multiple issues, not only in the coastal zone, but also in our general plan area. I don't want to rush through this if we don't have to. I want to make sure the public is very much aware of what's going on with this ordinance and how we're affected by the state law and what's triggering that.
Absolutely.
Supervisor Gittlen.
You know, I've seen, we have two different conversations going on here, 1803 and 1802. Now, I see a little discussion on 1802, which is the accessory dwelling units. 1803 is a simple raising of five feet more. So someone, that gentleman we've spoken last year, he and his wife can build their home, their dream home, which they couldn't build last year. So that's being addressed. Is there a discussion on 1803, the height limit? Is there any issue on that? So we can perhaps separate these two?
With coastal, we've had the negotiations. They're comfortable with the language. If there's no opposition from the board on the residential height limit, I'd be happy to bring that back in January for adoption, sending it off to coastal for certification. On the ADU issue, if the, if the wishes of the board is to put some more time into that, to look at, you know, some other alternatives, we can push that one out a little further, but I think Supervisor Gittlen's point is correct on the residential building height. This meeting was noticed with these items together because they all involve changes to the zoning code.
Sure.
But I don't see any reason why unless council opposes, we could bring the residential building height back for adoption subsequently.
Yeah, I want the clarity to be there on this particular issue because, as Supervisor Gittlen suggested, these are two separate issues, and we do need clarity on this. The latter, in my opinion, needs to be a lot more time spent on it in this community, understanding what they're discussing. The issues with the over height buildings and changing it in the local coastal zone so we could address the need that we had this last year is long overdue. I do think it needs to be addressed, but if we could separate that potentially and return to it in first meeting in January, I'd love to on that specific issue only.
Yes.
I don't know what the other concerns are from the board. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, I think there's no problem with bringing up the height restriction ordinance. That's not an issue to me. And the other, the other, the ADA, the ADU issue, if we're going to, my thought would be that if we're going to allow ADUs in the high or very high fire hazard area, that we do make them attached and not allow them to be detached. So that would be the compromise. That's the direction that I would think we would want to go in that particular case.
And I'd certainly like a lot more information to be shared with this board on what our options are. You've walked through and been very diligent with your time in presenting to the board, but I think I would like to have a more detailed conversation on what maybe the ERC heard, and then what also the planning commission heard, and have that flushed out for the public.
Okay, and you have your minutes from the planning commission meeting too, so I hope you can see the planning commission did spend a significant amount of time on that issue as well.
I think the board needs to spend the same amount of time in this case. Any other direction from the board for Mr. Hooper at this time? Okay, very good. So we'll look to return to our, on our January 9th meeting to potentially close the public hearing for the over height building first.
Can we get a motion on the first portion? It doesn't have to say the January 9th date, but in order to waive the reading and read by title only, that way we don't need to do that at the next hearing.
Counsel, this is 1803. Counselor, is this 1803 you're referring to, the height limit?
I'm referring to both unless the board is pulling the other off completely and will re-notice.
I'm a little confused, Counselor, because I'm not seeing any language in here that the...
Introduce ordinances by title only is the part that I'm asking about.
Isn't that what I read when I opened the...
So I'm asking, can we get a motion on that? Because we need a majority vote on that.
Okay, I'll make that motion. So we have a motion on the table?
So can I get clarity, so we're opening the public hearing on both is what you need?
Yeah, unless the board doesn't want to do that, I would recommend, because we're dealing with a couple of different ordinances here, the way that this is being done.
It's rather confusing.
And one is because it's a zoning ordinance and one is just ordinances in general. And so at this point, I think we can get that motion. There can be changes made to the ordinance at that time or you can pull that one off completely. I would be advising planning to, in either case, re-notice when they're asking for the adoption.
Does Supervisor Gitlin's motion cover that?
So the motion would be to open the public hearing and introduce ordinances by title only and to direct the staff to return the ordinances for board adoption. Is it 1802, C and 180...
That's my motion as you requested for clarity. So it comes back at the January 9th meeting on title only, et cetera.
For the height issue and the others...
So we are separating.
At a time...
To be determined.
To be determined, yeah.
So it's 1803, come back by title only, et cetera, the height limit only, and that'll come back. And the other one needs additional study, I guess, is what you're, what I'm hearing.
Is that the correct number?
I believe that is correct. I think the key thing is just, you know, the expectation was these would be ready to go on January 9th. Clearly, that isn't the case with respect to the ADUs. So the motion would be removing that January 9th date to leave the option open to bring back the ADU issue at some point in the future, as you said, to be determined, Chair.
Thank you.
As far as the public comment, I'm not sure if the public is fully done on providing input on what they might want to see in the ADU ordinance due as staff. You know, just to reemphasize, we have looked very closely at what limitations exist, sort of the restrictions that we're imposing, we consider to be reasonable. Anything further than what is, I think, enumerated in the proposal could be questionable. But we're happy to take input from the public, from the board, on what additional measures they might want to see on the ADU issue. I just, you know, it's going to be...
It's sometimes difficult for the working public to be here and sometimes I don't represent what their feelings are as best as I can.
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
We have a motion, second on the table. I know that's clear as mud for everybody. Kylie, I don't think there's any, it's, yeah.
What, can we restate the motion?
Liz?
Open the public hearing and introduce ordinance 18, or introduce both ordinances by title and at conclusion of public hearing, close the public hearing and direct staff to return the ordinances to the board for adoption. 1803 at the January 9th, 2018 meeting, and the others at a time in the future to be determined.
That's correct.
We had a motion, second on the table. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. My apologies for everybody at that, but we do need to take this, our time on this one. Thank you for everybody in their public comment on this.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, January 9th, we're going to rediscuss with more public input, hopefully, 1802. And that would be the accessory dwelling unit discussion. That's my understanding of how this will proceed, January 9th.
That is correct. That is my understanding too. All right. Mr. Palmer, I'm very sorry. We did have you as a timed agenda item for 10:25. I noticed we're over a little, but please, if you approach the dais for your presentation at this time to give us a fourth service update. I know you're busy all summer and in constant communication with us, which we really appreciated with all the fires and stirrings on, not only in our area, but further north.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Dave Palmer, District Ranger on the Smith River NRA. Just like to thank the board for, once again, the opportunity to come down and report out. It has been a long time and I apologize for that. Just to let you know, this will be my last opportunity to report out. I am going to be moving up to the Rogue River Siskiyou as the High Cascade District Ranger starting early January.
What did we do?
Congratulations.
What did we do?
Oh, you know, the county's been great. I mean, this has been, you know, really good three and a half years. Everybody's been really good to work with and just puts me closer to home.
Understandable.
Because I commute from Medford every day.
Well, it's a sad state. I think you're probably one of the best district rangers who've had a long time for communication with this board. It's been really appreciated.
Appreciate that.
I agree. I didn't realize you were commuting from...
Oh, yep, every day.
Wow.
Only hit three deers, so...
Only three?
Yeah.
Do we know who's coming into your spot?
Not yet. You know, Merv George is down at the regional leadership team meeting this week and I would suspect he's talking with Randy Moore, the regional forester, and they'll probably have a decision next week. He'll probably be a detailer for, you know, because the hiring is taking six months, so it could be a long-term detail, probably multiple people. So, um, let's see, what's been going on? Travel management, finally got a decision on it. You know, it's been, what, 12 years in the making? So now the force gets to hunker down and figure out how we can work with our partners to start implementation because, you know, we won't be able to implement it on our own. We're going to need everybody's help. And so I suspect, you know, in the coming new year, that there'll be some really good discussions and reaching out to our partners to see, you know, how we can work together to move that ahead. You know, we had the Gordon and the Harden Timber Sills, you know, they were offered. We had successful bids, so both of those are in the wings, waiting to be worked on. Harden, it'll probably be a little while until the hurdy-gurdy bridge is done because that's where they're going to haul out. And then the Gordon one, it was somebody like Central Oregon that bought it. So they're probably looking to sell to South Coast. So the timing on that, who knows when they'll start. The Smith River Collaborative's Little Jones Creek project, due to be signed Monday, the 18th. So next week, Merv George will be up on district to sign that pilot project. And, you know, thanks to the collaborative and Jerry's and Grant's leadership on that, moving that forward. And we're already looking for a new project. So we're going to keep those rolling and hopefully, you know, get the process down. Every year, we're rolling out a new project, you know, to treat fuels, get some timber out of our plantations. But yeah, we do appreciate, you know, everybody's hard work on that. So, you know, last year, we had a fire, 30,000 acres. So the Oak Fire and the Young Fire basically stayed in the wilderness. You know, it did come out and bump the 1602 road. I just wanted to thank, you know, the county and all the communities of Big Flat and everybody else for all your support and, you know, willingness to work with us on that. Because it could have been bad, but we got lucky. The south fork of the river pretty much held the fire in check and it only bumped over, you know, kind of north a couple times. So low severity burns, you know, so actually, you know, treated some vegetation for us. So, but, you know, it seems like every two years, we get a pretty big fire now. So we do appreciate everybody's support. Then recently, so, you know, Delano County taking the lead and working with our partners with the SRC and our tribal partners, got the, I was told to say this right, the NIFWIF grant. So some $276,000 to help treat fuels around a lot of our at-risk communities. So we do appreciate the county taking up the lead on that one. You know, it was, you know, it's a really good feather in everybody's cap because, you know, there was 12 proposals put out for a limited budget. I think they had $1.5 million to go out this time around. And there was two projects on the Six Rivers that, you know, were granted the funding. So, yeah, it was a huge success. So we look forward to probably more in the future, looking for more opportunities and working with our partners in Delano County. POC gates, you know, they're all closed now, but we were able to keep them open because the weather was with us for the whole hunting season. So I didn't receive any complaints in share on that. So that's always good. You know, we continue to sell lots of firewood and mushroom permits, a lot of interest in that, especially in the burned areas. Christmas tree permits are for sale right now. So you can get them at the district office or the Chamber of Commerce. It's a great partner and so we ship like 60 down here at a time and they sell out pretty quick. So we do appreciate the Chamber of Commerce willing to sell the permits. I'm going down my list here. I think, I think that's it.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm pretty quick, I know. But, you know, I do want to say, you know, three and a half years as a district ranger and working with the county and our tribal partners and the local communities, it's been a good experience. Yeah, it was my first district ranger job and hopefully I didn't do too bad of a job. And I just wanted to thank everybody.
Yeah, Dave, and right back at you, you know, we've got a, I think we've got a good combination with, or, you know, had, I guess, now that you're leaving. Appreciate it, appreciate all your efforts as well as Merv George. I think the combination was really good and hopefully the replacement will be just as good. We'll push for that. The NIFWIF grant that you spoke of, this is the first time we've been invited to actually put in a proposal, so we're very happy to do that. Or, I shouldn't say, I was happy to do that because I didn't have to do very much. But Heidi and Sheila and our tribal partners, Sheila Ballant from the Forest Service, as well as Heidi Constable from CDD, did absolutely a wonderful job, stayed right on it. So very happy that they were successful and that will open the door for us to do more of these projects in the future. So real happy, real happy about that and real thankful for all your support and everything you've done. We appreciate it having you around. I understand wanting to be a little closer on a commute. That's quite a ways to go every day. I never realized that you were commuting, so that's news to me after three and a half years.
A lot of miles.
Okay, again, thank you.
Other comments from the board? Public comment? Great, we'll return to the board. Definitely reflect, I think the board's general consensus in this case that the communication was great. Please rub that off a little if you get a chance to visit with a next district ranger.
Will do.
You've definitely set a very high bar for everybody.
Well, thank you. And once again, you know, thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate your time. All right, we're going to go ahead, we only have one other timed agenda item and that's at 11:30. So we're going to go back to our general government items and, which is item number 30 on our agenda, approve and authorize a chair to sign and send a letter addressed to William Kirkland regarding ideas to include with the president's infrastructure, in this case, budget as requested by Supervisor Berkowitz. Supervisor Berkowitz, can you kick this off for us, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So after two trips to Washington DC, one thing should be evident by now. There will never be enough money coming from existing sources to finance $300 million to $1.3 billion it would cost for a bypass for last chance grade. Current cost benefit studies for last chance grade that are being conducted in Washington DC center on the amount it would cost to keep repairing last chance grade versus how much it would cost to build a bypass. Well, we don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that if the government spends an average of $2 million a year to keep the existing road functioning to them, that's a lot more cost effective than spending $300 million to $1.3 billion all at once for bypass. Caltrans estimates that the bypass could be done by the year 2039. But even at that timeline, they have no idea where the money would come from to actually build it. As much as we would like to have Congressman Huffman to introduce legislation to actually fund the bypass, there's no hope of getting cosponsors for that bill or even getting a hearing on it. If it were actually introduced, no chance of even getting it through Congress, let alone passed and signed by the president. So there has to be a better way. And that bill, or any bill that's introduced in Congress or the administration, support by the bypass, has to have broad support and consensus. According to Riam Kirkland, the Special Assistant to the President, the president's $1 trillion infrastructure program is designed to replace and revitalize the nation's roads, bridges, and tunnels. In order for us to have a chance of getting part of those funds for the bypass, we need to broaden our function, our focus. And this is what this letter is before you today. It asks for support for any infrastructure that may be proposed, that it contains these priorities. Set asides for counties of our size, plus a funding for two-lane roads that have been shown to be structurally deficient, and funding for federal highways that have been, that have suffered recent storm damage. So this is the letter that we propose to you today. It was gratifying to hear federal highways, when the chairman and I were in Sacramento, say that we should be going on different avenues in order to try to get this funding. And so that's what this letter does today. It gives us an additional avenue to be able to try to get federal funding with support from the administration and then support from the Congress. So that's what we're asking for today, is to go on multiple pathways in order to be able to get funding, federal funding for this highway.
Thank you, Supervisor. Comments from the board?
Supervisor Berkowitz, I didn't see in the letter the addressing of the direct funding to each of the counties. Is that a discussion that's ongoing? There's 3,008 counties in the United States.
Right.
Now, is that something that could be added to this letter? Is it relevant? Do you see that as relevant?
Well, at this point, I don't think it's relevant. What we really want to do basically is get our support going and then if we need other support, try to get that going also.
Is this not an issue that NICO is also lobbying for?
NICO is also lobbying in this direction and so is our congressman.
Thank you. Other comments from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment, please.
Linda Sutter, Fifth District. Excellent idea. It's not going to hurt anything to send a darn letter. Whether we get the money or not, at least we tried and a little, put a little bit more effort in trying to get it done quicker. But if you decide not to send a letter, that shows you're not ready to progress with Delano County. Thank you. And by the way, that is a state-federal highway. Shouldn't be referred to as last chance grade. It should be called what it is, state-federal highway. They need to take care of that. Thank you. Washington does.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any comments from the board? No. I'd just kind of like to briefly reflect on this. This highway in particular, in this section that the board has been very focused on along with our senator, our assemblyman, our congressman, and a lot of folks representing Caltrans and addition federal highways, you know, we've been beating this drum for a long time. And I appreciate all the efforts from this board in particular to keep this at the forefront of every one of those agencies that is involved with this project. It's a lot of heavy lifting for a small county like ours to get a voice that's readily heard. In this, in this case, I think the direction that Supervisor Berkowitz has proposed, we've reflected on it. It's not going to hurt to go ahead and do this. The Special Assistant to President Trump has asked for comments from the county. I think this is a good start for us if there is an infrastructure bill presented to Congress next year. Early conversation is, maybe, maybe not, we'll see. But it's not going to hurt... Early conversation is maybe, maybe not, we'll see, but it's not gonna hurt to have our, our comments in from this county. My only question to Supervisor Berkowitz at this time is, are there any CCs you'd like to put on this?
Well, yes, we have a number of CCs, but they're not exactly CCs because, for example, if we're sending it to Doug Lamoff or Peter DeFazio or Mr. Schuster, the chairman of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, we need to word it just a little bit differently, but basically the same letter.
You don't want to include, you don't want to include CCs on this particular draft that go to...
No, I'd like to have separate letters.
Okay, that wasn't clear, so that's why I asked. All right, without any further comment at this time from the board, we're gonna go ahead and just pull the vote.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we've had a motion.
Oh, sorry. I'll make, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to authorize the chair to sign and send a letter addressed to a special assistant to President Trump, William H. Kirkland, to include the presidential, the president's infrastructure funding as requested by Supervisor Berkowitz.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second on the table. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, let's go ahead, item number thirty-one, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter to address Assemblyman Wood expressing the county's concerns with Sutter Health and Sutter Coast Hospital as requested by Supervisor Cowan. Supervisor?
Um, yes, we've been talking about this for a long time. I sit on a two-by-two with the city and the county and the healthcare district, and we are, as everybody knows, been fighting the battle against Sutter Coast for quite a while. In my meetings last week in SAC, it was, I was able to meet with the Assemblyman Wood and welcome, glad to see you here, and it was suggested maybe we have a letter over to him as well, and it does have some CCs to Sutter Coast and Sutter Health, and it's just one more step we're trying to take to tackle the problem that we're having with Sutter Coast and the high prices over at the ER as well as in the hospital.
Thank you, Supervisor. Comments from the board? Supervisor Gitlin?
I would ask that the Attorney General Xavier Becerra be also copied on this letter. We've had ongoing communication with his agency, his department, before on this particular letter, which is well crafted and expresses our concern, and I think he's taking, the Attorney General's office is taking a new interest in Sutter Coast and Sutter Health.
Thank you, Supervisor. Kylie, can you please make note of that? Other comments from the board? Okay, let's move to public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion? Oh, you have public comment? I'm sorry, I didn't see you waving back there. Okay, no worries.
Don't be hesitant.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Naomi Chogren, and so I have a question, what was, it was hard to hear you back there, what exactly is the issue you're addressing with Sutter Coast?
Well, we've had an ongoing problem with just high costs at Sutter Health, so, and high bills, and they bring in, God, I'm, they bring in a different company that does, takes care of the ER, and they're out-of-wet network doctors, so that raises the prices of what we pay when we go in, and just trying to emphasize to Sutter that we need to change that. We either need to bring in a company that is definitely within, have, in-network doctors that we can see, as well as just watching the price costs.
Okay. That's all I needed to clarify at this time, I just wanted to, is this gonna be on calendar for the next meeting?
No, we're gonna, this is just...
This is just a letter going out to the Assemblymen voicing our concerns. It has been an ongoing conversation. Well, for the past year that I've been sitting up here, we do also have two-by-two meetings with, like I said, the healthcare district, ourselves, and the city. I mean, if you have concerns...
Are you, are you addressing any, any issues with care that the doctors are providing the patients?
Not at this time, but if there is concerns, I would certainly encourage you to let us know about them so that we can address them.
Okay, well, I am concerned about one thing, I had taken a gal, an elderly disabled woman from her home, she had called me for help, and so we got her into town, we contacted her social worker, and, and when all was said and done, after contacting the social worker and Adult Protective Services, Sutter Coast Hospital, her doctor's assistant informed me to take her to Sutter Coast Hospital to be placed where she could actually get care. I was, I was there, and they threatened me with neglect if I left her with them. That's a really big issue, like they're professionals, they're doctors, they're there to provide for, for people, no matter their race or disability or any of that, and so that's an issue that might need to be addressed.
Good to know.
And that they're, they're like, this isn't our problem, like you need to take her back home with you. Well, it is their problem.
Thank you.
Sounds like there's more to that story, and I'd suggest approaching the supervisor outside the meeting and having that discussion. Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, is it, Ms., is it Linda? I'm sorry, your, your first name?
Naomi.
Naomi, I'm sorry, I heard it real quickly. There are a lot of issues in our office, I received no shortage of complaints and concerns about treatment at Sutter Coast, and we're trying to address these issues. It's billing, it's, it's a whole series of issues. It's even looking at their books, which we as a board of supervisors feel we have a right to look at their books in closed session, of course, to see if what their, what Sutter Health is saying is correct. So, we seem to be hitting a brick wall, and a solid one, when it comes to this very well attorneyed entity, and we want to improve the quality of the hospital. These complaints that here you are referring to right now, there's, they seem to be ongoing and continuous, and once or twice you could say, okay, it's an isolated event, but there seems to be a practice going on, and we want to get to the bottom of it, and we hope we can. So thank you for bringing another issue to our attention.
Okay, can I have a motion from the board, please?
I'll make the motion to authorize the chair to send a letter to Assemblyman Wood expressing the county's concern with Sutter Health and Sutter Coast Hospital as requested by Supervisor Cowan, with an added, added CC to Attorney General Xavier Becerra.
Thank you, noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. We're gonna go ahead and move to our timed agenda item, which is a presentation from Assemblyman Wood. Welcome, Assemblyman, great to see you on the North Coast.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. Obviously, I was listening closely, I'll, I'll look forward to receiving the letter, and I think it's important that, and the reason for the letter is important to, to articulate in writing the exact nature of the problems you're having. It gives me a lot more opportunity as the chair of the health committee in the assembly to bring Sutter in and, and ask some very, very pointed questions, and so without something in writing, I'm here, it's anecdotal, it's voice, and so, so the more detailed you can be, the better and more effective I can be to advocate on your behalf, so please fire away and let me have it, okay? Thank you so much. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to give you an idea of what we've been doing in Sacramento. Sacramento's a long ways away, I know, and it feels like in another universe to a lot of, a lot of people, I suspect, so every day I'm reminded that we are not living in an ordinary time. The challenges that face us, sometimes with our leadership in Washington DC, and here in California, being so different, has made my job rewarding, but also very, very challenging. I'm known in the capital as Jim, quote-unquote, "Remember Rural California," Wood, and I take that nickname seriously. I advocate constantly on behalf of rural communities. More than two-thirds of the, of the communities I represent would be considered rural, and many are considered somewhat to be frontier, and so we have, we have our challenges. So much of what we do is driven by large urban population centers, and some of my colleagues who are not from rural areas don't realize some of the things that affect us. So I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the things that happen in the legislature that will carry over into this year, that will carry over, and some that will carry over into two thousand and eighteen. We'll start with the environment. I introduced AB fourteen thirty-three to provide for the management of our natural and working lands. People in Northern California understand the devastation of some of the wildfires we experienced, and I certainly have, because of what happened in Sonoma and Mendocino County, but I have advocated for a long time for better forest management, and now we're seeing some of the same things happening in Southern California, and some of my Southern California colleagues who have been, who have not been as aware of that are now becoming acutely aware of some of the challenges we face. So I am, I'm hopeful as we move forward, we're going to see more and more resources allocated towards better forest management. So, obviously, some communities, some counties have a lot more federal forest land, so that is, that is a challenge for us, but if there's anything we can do at the state level to better manage our lands to, to protect life and property, we want to be able to do that. So, we, we actually were, we actually changed the fourteen thirty-three, and we actually, we didn't move the bill forward in, in return, what we were able to do was get twenty-five million dollars into the budget, through the budget process, and not move the bill. The bill's still available for us to do something else with at, at a later day, but the, the money's available through a grant program, through the Wildlife Conservation Board and Coastal Conservancy to help with thinning forests and working lands. So we also worked with the governor's office directly, it was a personal ask of me to the governor, to get one point five million dollars to kick off, kickstart the cleanup of our land damaged by rogue marijuana grows. As Prop sixty-four regulations are implemented, more revenue will come to meet this need, however, a jumpstart, I think, is, is important, and some of those grants were actually awarded just recently. We also need to support law enforcement, and are, we are in constant contact with the Department of Fish and Wildlife to ensure that the revenues are spent for, for these purposes. We've also put, as a legislature, put a four billion dollar water and parks bond on the ballot, which will allow our parks to rebuild their aging facilities, and during the negotiations, I made it clear that because the second Assembly District has more state parks than any other district in the state, we have forty-two altogether, that we needed assurances the priority will be given to address the needs of our parks, particularly around economic, around infrastructure. The, from an economic development perspective, we know our parks bring tourists and contribute a lot to our local economies. We'll move on a little bit to the cannabis industry, and I know every county in this district has taken a different approach. We know that the state is committed to having the Prop sixty-four regulations up and running in January, and I hope they do. Emergency regulations were released a couple of weeks ago, and there is some concerns and challenges around that. I've been concerned about the timetable from the beginning. The work we did on the Medical Cannabis Regulatory Safety Act had a, had a different timeline than Prop sixty-four. Prop sixty-four is much more aggressive, and, and that is, that, that concerned me from the very beginning, and was one of the principal reasons I had no interest in supporting the proposition. But for those folks who are committed to becoming legitimate cannabis businesses, not necessarily in Delnarc County, I understand, but I'll do what I can to support them, but I've long advocated for reasonable, workable regulations for the industry. We don't want to drive these folks further underground, that's where the bigger problems come, the better, better we can regulate this industry, the better it will be for everyone, I hope. Broadband continues to plague us. As I, as I travel up and down this district, I, I'm constantly reminded of the challenges, not just with broadband, but with cell, cell coverage as well. We need it for our businesses, our schools, our hospitals, libraries, we need it everywhere. It continues to be a challenge in rural California. We know the industry, the big players are not inclined to, to expand their services to areas with smaller populations, not to mention some of the rugged terrain we have here. This year I offered, I co-authored the extension of the California Advanced Services Fund that will provide three hundred million dollars in grant funding for broadband infrastructure for underserved, unserved, and underserved areas. It's essential for commerce and economic growth throughout the district, and also provides increased opportunities for individuals, for improvements in education, jobs, and healthcare. The language in, in the, in the legislation was drafted specifically to ensure that money is prioritized for those folks who have nothing at all or, or dial-up. Once everyone has basic services and is interconnected, we can focus on increasing speeds and healthy competition. We also had a bill, AB nine eighty, that, to require Caltrans to install empty conduit on some of its major projects, something that had been tried for many, many years. Instead, Caltrans has made a commitment to the issue and has actually changed their policies, so, so we don't, we didn't need the bill, we needed the conversation, and we needed the policy change, so, so we were, can continue working with the director at Caltrans to, to make sure this happen, happens. I hope it'll be one more incentive for carriers to install fiber optic in areas that otherwise would be cost prohibitive. One of the challenges is that the cost to actually put conduit in the ground is fairly minimal at the time that, that, that the roadbeds are open, but when you want to go back and redo it, or do it later, it's often ten to ten-plus times the cost to do that, and it's, it just doesn't make any sense. So, so if it's open and it's a, it's a reasonable project, we ought to put it in there and figure out who pays for it later on, but we need to get that, get that opportunity out there. Many of the local broadband consortia also meet now with Caltrans on a regular basis to communicate with them about the, about these, about this project, about conduit, about these projects, these expansion projects. I'd like to speak briefly about some healthcare issues. As Chair of the Health Committee, we have our work cut out for us, and, and I have another, another continuing task, task to work with you on here in Delnarc County. Many people are very frustrated with their healthcare, and I get it, I absolutely get it. They're also concerned about their employers and their small businesses, everybody related to this industry, and particularly costs. I'd like to talk a little bit about the bill, a bill I co-authored, SB seventeen this year, Drug Pricing Transparency Bill, very concerned about the increased cost of drugs and rising cost of drugs, and also AB two sixty-five, another bill that we carried. This, two sixty-five prohibits the use of drug manufacturers' coupons when another alternative might be available to someone that would be less costly. Drug manufacturers use these coupons as a way to entice people to stay on more expensive drugs. It sounds like a great deal when you get a coupon and go to the pharmacy and, and you don't pay much out of your pocket, but somebody's paying for it, and it's your insurance company, and that, that's the, that, that, that behavior leads to increased premium costs. Now, if your doctor has said, "That drug is the only one I want you on," you can still use a coupon, so we're trying to, we're trying to figure out a way to, to nip a really bad behavior in, in the bud. It's about, it's about an eight billion dollar a year practice for the drug companies, it's purely profit-driven, and it's, it's one of those other frustrations. I will note that the SB seventeen, the Drug Transparency Bill that I worked with Senator Hernandez, the chair of this Senate Health Committee on, for a couple of years, when it was passed, we finally did get it across the line, on Friday we heard that we are now being sued by Pharma. I guess no good deed goes unpunished, and so we will fight that vigorously, we believe it's the right thing to do, and I believe that one of the reasons the lawsuit is happening is because there is a great fear that this will be a national trend, and, and we sincerely hope it will, quite frankly. I'm also gonna continue my work on another bill, which is actually in the Senate, and we're working closely with the administration, it's AB three fifteen, which regulates pharmacy benefit managers, something you may or may not know about. They're the middlemen that work with health plans and the drug companies, and they negotiate on behalf of a drug, the health plans to try to get lower prices. I contend that there's more going on there than meets the eye. It's a two-hundred-and-seventy billion dollar a year business dominated by three companies that, that have eighty percent of the market. We want to understand how this is working, quite frankly, because some of the stories we're hearing are quite troubling. We hear stories of pharmacists that are not allowed to tell patients when a lower-cost alternative is available because of a non-disclosure agreement that may exist between the, the pharmacy benefit manager and the pharmacy. That has to end. Consumers need to be protected, and they need to know that they're getting, they're getting the most for their money, and I sincerely hope that once we get this across the line, we can, we can look inside the black box that is the pharmacy benefit manager program, that we can make changes to the, to this that will improve quality of healthcare for all consumers. Also, continuing, continuing to work on a couple of bills that were held this year. One is on the consolidation of health plans. My concern and, is that we have no oversight over health plan mergers in California. Bigger is not always better. Bigger for rural communities means less choice, less opportunities for people to engage with people who might be willing to provide service. If we have fewer and fewer choices, inevitably, we have higher and higher prices, and that does not benefit us in rural California. Also, continue to work on the opioid addiction problem, which is a statewide problem, but has, has shown that in rural communities, we have a higher, higher numbers per capita that, of people that have this problem. We need to... We have been struggling with this. It's something I've worked on for the last three years and been unable to get across the line, unfortunately. This year, we are working, there will be at least five authors working collectively, bipartisan, to bring a package of bills forward to actually make some progress. One of the challenges is that I believe that the prescribing patterns and the supply is too big. There are very few opportunities to return unused drugs and no incentive to do that. Also, just in general, there is very little money for treatment for folks, and that's a problem. So you will see a package of bills related to opioids moving forward this year. Last but not least, I'd like to talk a little bit about, just in general, the challenge of providing healthcare for all Californians. There was a bill this year introduced in the Senate, SB 562, which was an attempt to do that, but is more of an inspirational bill that lacked a lot of "how," quite frankly. It lacked details about funding, quality control, and utilization, and did not consider the unknown effects of the changes to the Affordable Care Act. I was appointed to a select committee to look at this issue. We held our first meeting last week, or we had our first meeting in October to talk about how we get healthcare for all. We had our second meeting yesterday in Los Angeles, and which is one of the reasons that I asked you to push me back a little bit. I got about halfway here midnight last night and made the rest of the trip this morning. So we'll continue to work on this issue. It's front and center, and I expect that this will be a major issue during the governor's race. So I'd be happy, at this point, to answer questions, and I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here.
Please, Supervisor Berkowitz.
Thank you, Assemblymember Wood. I really appreciate you being here today. I represent an area called Klamath. I'm sure you're familiar with it.
Very.
All right. I appreciate the fact that you're supporting broadband, especially for Klamath, because Klamath basically has no broadband, no dial-up, no phones, and in an emergency, they're going to be in a world of hurt. I appreciate that broadband bill that you're sponsoring. I'd like to know how many co-sponsors you have and what the process is in the Assembly at this particular time, the prospects for that bill.
Well, that bill actually passed. It was signed by the governor. There were, oh, gosh, I can't remember the number of co-authors on that, but it was a bipartisan bill. And it was supported by Assemblymember Dolly, in particular, Assemblymember Obernolte, and others on the other side of the aisle, as well as my colleagues in rural areas, Assemblymember Sissi Agiar Currie, represents the Lake County area, and all the way at the southeast corner of California, Eduardo Garcia, who represents the Imperial Valley. So this was a year-long project to do this, and with the idea that we get 98% coverage to each region in California, not 98% overall, because 98% overall hurts communities like Delnart County. And so if we get 98% per county, that's a much better outcome.
So what's that going to mean for Delnart County?
Well, I think at the end of the day, we'll be looking for projects, and there will be opportunities for grant funding to be able to move forward on projects. So I'd be happy to work with your communities and moving forward on that. But a lot of this, we'll need to identify projects and then help coordinate the funding to do that. But I'm happy to work with you on that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, Assemblymember Wood. Thank you so much for coming.
My pleasure.
I appreciate all your efforts, healthcare, and broadband, like Supervisor Berkowitz said. You know, keep up the good work. Appreciate, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Supervisor Gitlin.
Assemblymember, thank you again for coming up and addressing us. I do have some issues, and I'm not going to ask how much time I have, but I will be succinct. AB 109, I had an opportunity to dress, sit on a panel with Secretary, CDCR Secretary Kernan, and he has done, quite honestly, a marvelous job in lowering his numbers by Supreme Court mandate that said you have to lower down to 136% of your capacity, or, I'm sorry, 143, and then it's a hard cap of 136 inmates. And I say this in the audience, as our chief probation officer and Commander Steven on behalf of our sheriff here. This has put a great burden on our small county. With all due respect to our jail, it's woefully lacking, and we don't have the funding to deal with this great job CDCR, but it's coming down on the back of our very challenging, modestly-staffed county, money-wise. So short of it, we need more money, and we need more money to deal with the issues that are ancillary and coming down and affecting our community. Again, commendation to Secretary Kernan, but it's had its effect on the yin and yang of it on Delnart County. That was issue number one. The other issue, SB 1, the roads bill. Appreciate the fact that this is great news for the cities. We're not getting our fair share. Our gas in our poor county has gone up 12 cents a gallon, our diesel 20 cents a gallon, DMV fees are up. It's put a burden on this. I would have hoped that we would have had some kind of an exemption, because we already see it. So many of our people are going up to Oregon to buy their gas, and who knows what else. And it's putting a burden on the six gas stations that are here, and we hope that that could be amended, that there be some kind of an exemption there. And the last one is SB 54. Not all of us are on board with sanctuary state, and we think it should be reviewed and looked at a little more pragmatically. And we all know that this is a problem, and it isn't going away just by declaring ourselves a sanctuary state. So those are my three issues, and I hope you could address some of those now.
Well, first of all, AB 109 predates me. I wasn't around then, but we also have a governor who felt very strongly about AB 109. So I can assure you that any changes related to that won't happen until after this governor leaves office. I'm acutely aware of the challenges this place on all the counties in the district, all the counties in California. I've talked with the sheriffs in the counties, and I know that the cost of keeping people in county jails for longer is leading to unintended consequences. For example, Steve Freitas, who was the sheriff of Sonoma County, when I talked to him about this about a year ago, actually, he said, "We're actually paying for our first hip replacement for a prisoner, someone who's incarcerated here. We never anticipated," especially around medical costs, "that we were going to have to incur." The unintended consequences of that are really, really a problem for counties, and I don't think that anybody expected that. So I know that, you know, I do talk with law enforcement on a regular basis, and you just never know with some of these things. But I will tell you, with this particular governor, any change in 2018 is unlikely, and that's the nature of the beast. Same with redevelopment. I'm a big believer in redevelopment. I came from a city. We use redevelopment to help build housing, to help with our infrastructure, and when we lost redevelopment, it hurt us. Now, counties have redevelopment as well, and I know this county used its redevelopment dollars for other projects. So I am frustrated by that. As far as SB 1 goes, difficult vote, a very difficult vote. I will tell you that every city and every county will get resources for this. So you will get resources right now. There are no, I will also note that there are only 30 of the 50 counties that have projects on the list that are available for funding. But there is a process to go through. So if there are projects that this county needs, I will absolutely support you to help you get the resources you need. But it is designed in such a way that every city and every county will get resources, and I was responding, and partly my vote by request from your county Public Works folks to support this, as did every other county Public Works Director in the district. So I also appreciate the increased cost burden. I spoke, if you can go back and see this, I spoke on the Assembly floor about my concern, how this does impact rural counties. We drive longer distances. The uses of our vehicles are different, and we, in general, have lower levels of income. So to me, it is a disproportionate burden on smaller communities. For me, it was about the greater good for California. I drive about 40,000 miles a year, and I did on the back of a napkin, figured out it cost me about $200 a year. Now, we know that for people that drive, and this is not my study, these are independent studies, that say the average person is spending about 600 or 700 bucks a year to repair their car for the bad roads. I think I'd rather spend that 200 bucks upfront with a chance to try to save money and wear and tear my vehicle in the long run. Do realize also that certainly the diesel part of it is creating challenges, and it is frustrating. To get a rural carve-out, that's, you know, at this point, it was a two-thirds bill, the likelihood of going back and amending that is minimal, but I'll certainly take that under consideration. So SB 54, I would just, you know, we'll just agree to disagree on that one.
Supervisor Cowan.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming up. You've always made yourself available to me when I've been down in Sacramento and when you've been up here, and I really appreciate that, especially for someone new like myself. You're always there to answer questions. I'm looking forward to working with you and solving some of our healthcare issues, I hope. I think you're going to be a good avenue, and I'm glad to hear that you're willing to work with us. It is a big issue for us up here. You know, we have a very low income, and we can't afford these costs, so I look forward to working further with you.
Thank you. You know, I think for me, as a healthcare provider, we see the challenges rural communities face, and so as people look at, you know, universal coverage or single payer, my concern is that any time you do a one-size-fits-all, and I think SB 1's a good example of that, that it doesn't always work out like you'd like it to for all communities in the state. And so I just want to see that we get our fair share. We have a really difficult time attracting doctors and nurses and nurse practitioners and you name it, right on down the line, to smaller rural communities. And so the more we can do to incentivize people to come to beautiful communities like this, once they're here, they'll stay. But it is a challenge, and I'll continue to advocate for our rural communities. Thank you.
Please.
Yeah, I just had, you know, I just, I wasn't going to, but I want to talk about SB 1 a little bit, about what it does to this county in particular, because the one-size-fits-all thing, we know, doesn't work. But in this county, I think the net gain to the state is going to be negative to what they were getting previous, because it just drives more people to go across the border, not only getting their fuel in Oregon, but also the retail business. So we just lose a little bit more every time. So it doesn't really fit. I think we should, you know, that we are part of the state, and we need to pay our fair share, but I think in this particular case, we're not. And the incentive is really to go to Oregon now to buy your fuel and to buy other retail products. And when you add more costs to a residence in Delnart County, it just exacerbates the problem. So I just wanted to throw that. You probably know that.
No, and I appreciate that. I think you have a lot of people leaving this area to get their healthcare in Oregon as well. And so those are unintended, you know, those are things that people in Los Angeles don't think about. They don't think about it in San Diego either, because they're not likely to go south to get their healthcare. But certainly here, well, maybe they are, I don't know, but certainly here, with your proximity to the Oregon border, yeah, I get it. And with no sales tax in Oregon, I mean, there's a variety of things. And I know that the gas prices were already lower in Oregon before this happened, and so it is frustrating, and it's something we're really aware of, and it's something I talk about at a regular basis. Whoa, wait a second here. You're driving people out of our communities here, and that's frustrating. But I will put something into perspective for you. I represent five counties in California. I have the largest Assembly District of any Democrat. The largest district is Assemblymember Dolly, to the east of us, who represents nine counties. He and I are good friends, and we work together on a lot of issues related to Northern California, and it's an honor to do that. He's the new Assembly Republican Leader, and so we've already met a couple of times to look to collaborate on what can we work on this year, what can we work on for our communities. And so I will continue to do that. And he's a visitor. He comes over here, he likes to go fishing. So anybody wants to go fishing with him, let me know.
Supervisor Berkowitz.
Assemblymember Wood, there's a talk in Sacramento about a new tax, and the new tax would be taxing miles driven by cars. Have you heard anything about that, and how do you feel about that?
You know, I have heard about it, but I don't believe that there is anything moving forward on that. I know there are some studies that were being done about that, but I think what you see with SB 1 is what was ultimately moved forward. And so I'm not aware if there is something. I'll certainly keep my eyes open for that. But, yeah, and once again, that would certainly affect disproportionately communities like ours here. Absolutely.
Good. Any other comments from the board? Just go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Step aside, then.
Yeah. We'll invite you back up, Assemblymember.
I just had a question in regards to when he, when Assemblymember Wood was talking about the opioid addiction problem and returning of unused drugs. What kind of legislation are you developing for that? Because we have to pay for our drugs. Are we going to get our money back when we return those drugs? You know, I'm concerned about our government legislating what we do with our unused medicine.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you for your comments. Well, you won't get money back. I can guarantee you that. It's like, you know, you don't get money back from partially eaten food either, you know, so. But unfortunately, when you return certain things, you can't get them back. For a variety of reasons, we have no idea what may have happened in the bottle. There's no way to assure that it's completely so. So the takebacks are not, there's not a way to penalize people, but a lot of people keep drugs in their medication cabinets because they don't know what else to do with them. It's not good to dump it down the toilet that goes into our wastewater treatment systems. That affects, that is increased cost to the cities and the counties to deal with that. It's not great for it to go into landfills, because once again, those things can leach out into the soil and cause other kinds of contamination. So, you know, we are not sure exactly what we want to do with that. In a lot of places, you can return it to police stations, and then they will actually incinerate it and destroy it that way. But drugstores don't want to take it back. Drug companies don't want to take it back. They want to get it out into the world for us, but they don't want to take it back. Somebody needs to have responsibility for that. And my concern about the opioids in particular that are maintained in the drug cabinets is that, and one of the things we're looking at is the amount is actually prescribed. So if you have chronic pain, that's a different story. People on chronic pain are prescribed large amounts, and rightfully so. But acute pain is where they're often prescribed way more than they need. And I can't tell you how many examples. I'm a dentist, where I'll see someone and said, "Hey, you know, I had a tooth taken out, and I was prescribed 40 Vicodin." Well, I said, "How many did you take?" "Two." "So what did you do with the other 38?" "Well, it's sitting in my drug cabinet." Well, it's an attractive nuisance, and there's a large percentage of people who develop dependence on opioids because they find medications in the cabinet, as often kits. And so it's an attractive nuisance. We want to find a way to get this out of the system. We can get out what's already out there out of the system, but more importantly, to actually change prescribing patterns so you just don't prescribe as much. So that's the idea.
Thank you, Assemblymember. And I'll go ahead and wrap this up for us. Really appreciate your time in Sacramento, spending that with Supervisor Cowan, and I addressed many issues with you at that point. I will emphasize that having an outreach session similar to what Senator McGuire does here with the Town Hall, I know you said you would follow through with us on that coming year, and we're really looking forward to that, because it does give you an excellent forum to hear from not just the board, but also the community on areas of interest. But thank you for spending that late night, hitting halfway up, and appreciate your visit to the county. Have a great day here, and looking forward to hearing all about your visit. All right. Enjoy the smoke from LA. That's right. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on with item number 32, which is approve and authorize the Chair to sign and send a letter to address the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration for the support of the Delnart Economic Development Corporation so they can continue their economic development efforts within the service area by offering small business loans to potential owners who traditionally are unable to find funding for their project as requested by the Exec Director of the Economic Development Corporation. It's my understanding that she wasn't able to join us today. Jay, do you have any comments on this before the board takes up this action?
I believe that recommendation was pretty self-explanatory. So if there are any questions about that, we have worked with the D.C. in the past, and obviously, they work with small business. So the request is, I believe this is not the first request they've made.
Correct. Thank you, Jay. Any comments? All right. We're going to go ahead and open that for public comment. All right, we're going to go ahead and open that for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Can we move this forward by consensus? All right, very good, we'll move it forward. All right, let's go with item number 33, which is approve and appoint Supervisor Hemmingson as a delegate, and Supervisor Cowan as alternate to the Golden State Finance Authority Board of Directors for 2018. Open it up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion from the board, or any comment from the board?
Yes, I have a comment. Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'm sorry, I observe a disturbing trend in how we are appointing supervisors from this august board to serve. And I see there are three prominent names, pretty much all the time, in issues that reflect on our county. We're effectively eliminating the voices from Districts 1 and Districts 5, that'd be Supervisors Gitlin and Berkowitz respectively. It's disturbing, because I see it all too often, and it's common. And I'd like to see that there's a fairness applied in some of these prominent public venues where some differences of opinion are heard. And I, on that basis, on, on number 33, I will nominate Supervisor Berkowitz as the delegate, and have Supervisor Hemmingson as the alternate to the Golden State Finance Authority in Sacramento.
The, if I could just address those comments, just briefly, I suspected this might be a point of discussion for this board. I had removed myself off of these committees as Supervisor Cowan asked to serve. I've drug her to a lot of discussions, both at CSAC and RCRC over this last year, and had the chance to observe her interactions with many of the folks representing other counties, and not only other counties, but also agencies within the state. And she's done an excellent job representing this community. But the point I wanted to make is that when Supervisor Cowan, or myself, or you, for instance, represents us at RCRC, you're representing the board, you're not representing individual opinion. And my hope is that when we represent this community, we go forth with what the board has agreed on in those discussions, whether it's CSAC or RCRC, as points that the board has taken up, discussed, and debated at length, and move forward with those opinions as, at consensus. I know Supervisor Hemmingson has done that, I've watched him at RCRC, I've done that myself at CSAC. My hope was that this would not be contentious, but I understand your reasoning, Supervisor Gitlin, I'm not trying to overlook, but at the same time, I'm trying to address a need that I believe Supervisor Cowan would address well. Supervisor Berkowitz.
Thank you. I'm going to second that nomination for discussion.
Counsel, as it wasn't agendized, how do I address the issue specific to a nomination coming forth from DIAS?
Well, we've talked before about having language in there that either just has a blank or says proposed.
Mm-hmm.
So that's not in this one, so like, very, technically, it's not the item being voted on. So I would suggest that it, as a matter of technicality, it would be pushed to the next agenda, if that's something the board would be willing to entertain. If not, then...
Does the board have the ability to move forward with a vote today without tabling it until our next meeting, to essentially leave the names blank? It's traditionally been an appointment by the Chair of the Board to these positions. I don't see why we would change that at this time, but I would...
Yeah, so the item, the nomination, the alternate motion, isn't what is agendized, and so, so that item shouldn't move forward, but the other one can.
If, if there's will amongst the board.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, okay. I'm going to open this to public comment. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board. We do have an agendized item, which is item number 33. I'd like to get it, not necessarily consensus, but a poll of this. We can't take the alternate motion up at this time, but if there's willingness to move forward on the agendized item, we are able to do that. Kylie, can you please pull the vote? Oh, sorry.
I wouldn't, I would, I would make the motion that we approve Supervisor Hemmingson as a delegate, delegate, and Supervisor Cowan as the alternate to the Golden State Finance Authority Board.
And I second that.
So we have a motion and a second on that. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Are we going to have any discussion on this?
Please.
Or are we going to rubber this?
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
Thank you.
But please, feel free to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like you have created such a closed-loop system that it's impossible for any nomination that you oppose to get a fair hearing. It's evident that the supervisor that you support will automatically get selected for any position. Take a look at the three items that we're going to be working on. This appears to be a systematic and deliberate elimination of 40% of the members of the Board of Supervisors. In addition, basically what we have is a three-member board. At a previous meeting, one of my constituents, Elizabeth Freeman, complained that because of the action of this three-member board, her district is essentially without representation. And she's right. Today's action is further proof of her contention. In an open system, the chairman would ask for other supervisors to weigh in on the selection process, and then have an open discussion where others who want the position would get a fair hearing. Unfortunately, of course, that's not happening today. One supervisor has been anointed with the position, and that's what's going to happen. End of discussion. Yes, it's true. The fix is in. That's my comments.
Supervisor Gitlin?
I have to concur. I mean, it's, it's unpleasant, this is not a standalone event. This, these three in a row are the culmination of a, pretty much a year-long frustration on the part of 40% of the Board of Supervisors in Delano County. Our voices are muted, they're nullified, and they're done for reasons that are not necessarily, necessarily of substance, because frankly, you just witnessed a whole bunch of 5-0 votes this, this, this meeting. And it's done on a basis of personal feelings, and animus, and anger, and frustration, it's juvenile, and it's, it doesn't belong on this board. So I'm not going to approve 33, 34, or 35, in an effort to try to bring this board together in some kind of fair manner, where all voices in all districts are heard. And it is not a Oregon-style commission of three, which runs Delano County, operates Delano County, but a full respected, mutually respected Board of Five. And that is why I will vote no on 33, 34, and 35, until such time as this matter is addressed in a manner that is mutually agreeable to the parties who are the supervisors that are bringing this to your attention, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor, any further comments from the board? Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz? No. Supervisor Gitlin?
Nope.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Item number 34, approve and appoint Supervisor Hemmingson as delegate, Supervisor Cowan as alternate to the Rural Representatives of California, or Directors for 2018. This is a position that Supervisor Hemmingson already serves, and I was alternate, and recusing myself in appointing Supervisor Cowan at this time, which is my discretion as Board Chair. Open it up for public comment.
You know, you guys can go ahead and play this little game, because the election time is six months away, and then we'll get to have a whole new board again. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other public comment? Great, bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion, second. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Nope.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
No.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yep.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, approve, number, item number 35, which is approve and appoint Supervisor Hemming as a delegate, and the Director of the Solid Waste Management Authority, Ted Ward, as the alternate to the Environmental Services Joint Power Authority Board of Directors for 2018 year. Open it up for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Sorry.
And a second. Discussion? Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Nope.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
No.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, item number 36, approve and appoint the proposed multiple operations policy for Delano Probation Department as requested by the Chief Probation Officer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Try not to take up too much of your time, because I know you have a full agenda already. The policies before you today are a continuation of our efforts to institute a comprehensive manual for the department, which has been lacking for, for a long time. So the policies before you today address a variety of topics, most of which are specific to probation supervision operations in the field, situations that officers might encounter when they're conducting probation visits at homes, things like that. A number of these situations are most appropriately, appropriately not addressed by my staff. So it provides guidance on how they're to handle issues like adult abuse that they run across, child abuse, missing persons, things like that, how they can appropriately triage, and what our obligations are for reporting, for documentation, and handing those off to other agencies if that conversation happens, and that's an appropriate option. So it provides direction for my officers in the field, in a lot of those situations. Vehicle use and maintenance is something that the county already outlines, however, we have different things in some of our vehicles that need to be addressed, and specific requirements that we need to abide by. And so policies such as that address those specific instances. Handling of property and evidence, protected information, which is access to the DOJ, FBI systems, things like that, provide guidelines, procedures for my staff to work with. If there's specific questions on any of these, I'm more than happy to discuss.
Excellent. Thank you, Lonnie. Questions from the board? Supervisor Gitlin?
And again, Lonnie, I want to commend you for helping us help you do your job. It cleans up areas, I went through this, it's, it's consuming, there's several pages here, lots of changes. I guess it disturbs me a little bit, there's so many changes. But you're trying to make a, you're trying to make your job, which is a challenging one, more facilitating, and one in which people are safer, and, and the process of doing a difficult job is made a little easier, and that's just good, good, good policy. So I really want to commend you on this, Lonnie, and I fully support the changes that you've indicated in this 300 to 900 series of different aspects of how Delano County Probation Department operates. Thank you.
And I do want to point out, I couldn't do this without the help of my staff. You know, this is a monumental task, and so my staff have pitched in, we've worked closely with union, council has been more than willing to dive in the depths of this stuff and give us good direction, so it didn't come by a sole effort by any means.
Any other comments from the board? We're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment this time. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Thank you, Lonnie, I know this has been sitting out there for quite some period of time, I'm glad we're getting to some fruition on this. So without further ado, we're going to go ahead and look for a motion.
I also move that probation, I guess the, the motion is approve the proposed policies for the probation department titles 300 through 900 series inclusive, and that is the motion.
Excellent, thank you, Supervisor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, we're going to move to item number 37, which is approve and enact the interim ban on commercial cannabis activity as urgency ordinance by four-fifths of, while the county considers comprehensive local cannabis regulation as requested by county council. Joel, I see you here today, please.
Thank you, sir. So this is kind of the long-promised interim ban here, it's the last meeting of the year. This will prevent state licenses from issuing, because they would then be inconsistent with this law. So this basically keeps the status quo until we can come up with something better. This does not cover the 215 collective grows, this does not cover the six plants for personal cultivation. This is just for the, six plants for personal cultivation. This is the, the commercial licensing of the state that we've talked a lot about, this is the actual business side, it will not go forward if the board passes this ordinance. A few notes on the urgency ordinance process. This is not noticed like a normal ordinance, and it doesn't have to wait five days between introduction and enactment. After the title is read, the board can by motion waive the full reading of it, that can be a three-fifths vote, passage is a four-fifths vote, and it only lasts 45 days, it will terminate on its own unless the board extends it. The board will extend it in a regular noticed process, like a normal ordinance. And so that will basically be something we bring forward on the January 23 meeting. So you'll see all of this stuff again very, very soon. I believe you guys know what's going on, if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you. Joel, any questions from the board at this time? Okay, very good, thank you, Joel. We're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Please.
My name's Alan Orton, thanks for letting me speak. I had the first cannabis car here in this county in 1997. They brought a Japanese film crew at the first club in San Francisco and did an interview with me, because I had PTSD, I was drafted just down the hall here. I wrecked the truck in Vietnam with over 120 people on it. And I also, out of 5,000 of these prescriptions with Dr. Nikaria, he was on Giantoli Lane there, first hotel on the right, and he flew up and he'd do about 100 prescriptions on Saturday and about 100 on Sunday, $150 apiece. He told me personally that I was the first man in the state of California they put down for PTSD for one of these medical marijuana cars, and he also couldn't do any more permits in there because of one of the Indian tribes owned property in there. I just got this from the billing department. Do any of you folks know what kind of piece of property that a person could grow here in Delano County? You do know what would be the property?
We spent the last year discussing that here during seven public meetings, yes, we have.
Well, I wish you'd please, if I get all the permits right, you would think of my piece of property. Let me read this, please.
Sure.
Permits, hotels, motels, clubs, and lodge halls, hospitals, sanitariums, clinics, realty, realty stores, of a light commercial character, conducted by the building, storage, garages, offices, outdoor sale yards of automobiles, boats, commercial recreation vehicles, restaurants, theaters, uh, storage and warehousing, bottle wherers, carpenter shops, machine shops, plumbing shops, public garages, welding shops, and other use of similar character, manufacturer of clothing, handicraft products, printing, lineograph, other light manufacturing, or industrial uses of a similar character, manufacturer of food products and pharmaceuticals, not including the production of fish, meat products, vinegar, or sauerkraut. So if ever, you know, I do have, you know, the right property permits, I wish you'd think of me. One other thing, you talked about Caltrans. My son Jerry worked up at Idlewell several years ago, when he was going to work on his motorcycle, he hit the guardrail and broke his back. He'll never walk again. Another thing with your gas, I know you're all politicians here, they used to bring 900-foot ships out here and pump it into our, to our yard here. Also, I know Mr. Hemmingson, I'm pretty positive, they're called mid-water ships, ships that Oregon built, and it took a lot of them licenses from us, and out of our place here, too. And they can only fuel here, San Francisco. they could only fuel here, San Francisco, or Portland. They couldn't come anywhere else and do that, and that's some reason that the gas prices are. Also, I was also in aviation. I graduated nineteen sixty-three from Delnor High, and the school owned the plane. And Mr. Suvam was a teacher and plus instructor, you know, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments, and just so you're aware, this is just an ordinance that doesn't ban our local population from growing it under Prop. sixty-four. That's still going to be allowed. You still could grow six plants. We're not preventing that from occurring. So, just to be clear, this is for commercial grows only, and we're going to be addressing that throughout next year with our working group.
Another thing, it's nice that you're at least doing this, up in the Gold Road.
Mm-hmm.
I got pictures of them right now. The plants were over eighteen feet tall, so you know, like you said, you wouldn't want them down here where my grandma used to wear them.
Right.
Yeah.
Appreciate your comments again, sir. Thank you. Public comment? Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jesus. I moved here three years.
One more time.
My name's Jesus. Jesus.
Last name?
Cabrera. C-A-B-R-E-R-A.
Nice to meet you, sir.
My concern is, everybody's worried about losing money to Oregon, right? This is another opportunity to get money back. You can tax it at a higher rate, make money off commercial, whatever. Oregon's already doing it, and they're benefiting it from everybody that lives here in this county, everybody's going over there, buying at whatever price. Why not do it here and make money out of it? Because to me, it sounds like we're struggling for money from the way you guys are talking. So, why not just, you know what I mean, keep it from moving over there or staying over there and bring it here? I mean, why are you guys so concerned about? That's my, one of my questions to you guys.
Sure. And we could answer that after you're done with your public comment, or I could address it.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, are you finished, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate those comments, Jesus. So, this board has taken up this conversation diligently for this past year. We've had close to seven public meetings now. Participation has been far and wide and very transparent, and we've moved that discussion into a working group, and I see one of our members here in the audience today who's with us, and they're going to be continuing this. As noted here, it's an interim ban, which allows this county to fine-tune it, because we really don't know the impacts that are going to be associated to our local government as far as cost of implementing new regulation, and that's what really we're trying to tease this down. Cost is a big factor to us. There might be benefits economically that folks will realize, but we also have to see what the cost is going to be associated with new regulation, and that's where we're going to take our time and wade into this as a county and see what folks come up with. And we'll see where that lands, but that's a brief answer, and I'll be more than happy to talk to you after, and Joel Campbell, also in front of you, who's with a deputy county council, could also address those questions that you might have later. Any further public comment? Ms. Sutter, please.
I don't know. Can you guys not see the economic blight in our town, in our county? Do you have a blind eye to all those buildings that are boarded up because the businesses have left? Can you not? I'm so disappointed that you've taken a whole year, and for some reason, you can't come up with an ordinance to let this go start on January first like everyone else. This is an opportunity for this county to dig itself out of the hole. You know, my street, near Roy Street, on October thirtieth, they built, somebody dug a big old hole in the street. County came in, filled it up, but it's a pothole now because they didn't pave it. Why? You don't have the money? I mean, this is outrageous that you don't have an ordinance ready to go before the first of the year. What are you doing? Just sit there on your bottom to go to these meetings and get nothing done? You're just doing it for your dog and pony show. It's outrageous. Do something. Get an industry up here or leave Delnor County as a shipwrecking yard that it is, waiting for the next tsunami to come in so you can get some more federal money. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Further public comment? Mr. Ego?
So, I'm Robert Durega, I'm a county resident, I'm a member of the Cannabis Advisory Board. We weren't really consulted as far as the interim ban. I did have some things that I was going to leave for you, and I didn't want to be abrasive, and maybe this would sound a little abrasive. Those are kids' books, you know, they're Fearless Way of Talking to Your Kids About Pop, because you guys seem to be stoked with some fear. I remember the first cannabis, what do we call them, the cannabis workshops? And we took turns applauding for each other with no opposition. You know, your guys' job is clear. You know, Roger talks about one of the last subjects, your voice being nullified. Roger represents me, District One. Sixty-six percent of us voted for Proposition Sixty-four. Fifty-one percent of us voted for Roger Gitlin to represent District One. Where's my voice? Where's my voice, Roger? I don't ask that you agree with me, I ask that you represent me fearlessly, and if I'm shitting up here, take a shit next to me.
Mr. Durega?
I'm sorry, your employer cursed at one of the last meetings, I didn't see you correcting him.
Please refrain. Please refrain. Thank you.
You did not correct Blake Alexander. I will.
I was not at that meeting, please refrain.
You were. He cursed, and he was not corrected. Sales tax. Do I pay sales tax? We have an organization, Delnor's Patients Together. So, sales are going to be banned. Am I still paying sales tax? These are the items that I get right now. They're not going to be bringing them to me as of the first of the year, because I don't have a license. I won't have a hard time getting this stuff. It's not tested, there's no labeling on it, it's just cannabis oil. This stuff's good, it's pressed, there's no solvent involved, but nobody knows what they're taking. This stuff, people know what they're taking. It's lab-tested. They can choose healthier alternatives. This I'll have no problem offering for the next year. This stuff I won't be able to get anymore. It's high CBD. They know with one drop, it's so much of a dose, with two drops, it's so much of a dose. I don't have the resources, our organization doesn't have the resources, to sit here and test all these things, so we rely upon large organizations that have. Organizations, quite frankly, we'd like to welcome into our community to provide jobs, chiba-chus and such. I've done an immense amount of work of curating the selection of stuff, you know, of cooperatively, collectively working with other organizations to provide this to our members. Am I supposed to stockpile it in the next couple of weeks to whatever I can afford? To whatever the organization can afford? Because you're not ready for me? Twice now, the sheriff has come to me for footage for homicide investigations. What are you fearing? That you'll have the footage from all these organizations that are legally required to have immensely high-quality surveillance systems with great megapixels? I mean, it's the only industry that actually regulates what kind of cameras we're using. I don't know what you guys are afraid of, and there's been a couple of occasions that have shown you guys that you urgently need to make an ordinance, you've had plenty of time, twenty fifteen, nineteen ninety-six, twenty sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Durega.
Time and again.
Thank you.
And I would, I would.
Appreciate your comments.
This is more akin to like my kids, when they'd rather cook.
I appreciate your comments, sir.
They don't want to do the dishes, though.
Thank you.
So, the dishes take forever to get done, but man, they're in there cutting up their vegetables, you know?
Thank you.
Take the books home, they're for the staff, Fearless, you know, it's the way that you Stoners talk to their kids about pop, because we don't want to be insulting the marginalized.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Public comment?
I have a question. My name is Rob Miller from Smith River, and it was commented on that the ordinance is good at the moment for forty-five days, and it could be extended with regular notices. And my question would be, how long are regular notices effective to extend the ban? Do we know? How many times?
We'll go ahead and accept that question, Mr. Miller, and then we'll bring county council back up to help address that.
And then the other thing is, as of November fourteenth in twenty seventeen, there is available all of the counties in the state of California that have approved or not approved retail sales of cannabis, and at the moment, there are more than forty counties that have not approved retail sales.
Thank you for that. Any further public comment? We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Sorry, didn't see your hand, sir. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Richard Richards. I live at three forty-nine Fifth Street, right across from a baseball park, and I'm really feeling fortunate to have affordable housing there, good neighbors. I love my town, my city. It's pretty much a city to a country boy. And Robert is my friend. I know what a good man is, and I know what a man who hasn't grown, hasn't, you know, we've all shed, we gray-haired was. We're not the men we once were. And fifty-seven years ago, before I was a substitute teacher, before I was an autob mechanic, I was a property manager in Santa Monica, and I ran into pediatric cancer. I was fourteen years old. When people say cancer and pain, I always like to tell them, you don't know what you're talking about. A ten, a maximum pain, and I think we all think we've been at a ten, but you haven't. A ten is when you're in so much pain that you cannot stand up. You roll around on the floor trying to find a spot where it doesn't hurt so bad. Thank goodness, I haven't had that a lot, but my mother, about twenty-five years ago, got me off of Narco, not Narco, I can't remember what the pain pill was, but because I'm an amputee, mastectomy, clavectomy, amputation. My whole shoulder used to be out here, and it shrunk, so you can see. My mom brought home a joint for me. My mother, Seventh Day, was Seventh Day, I'm honest, a woman that you would want living next to you. My dad was just as good. So, over the years, twenty years I taught school, by the way, in Oregon, you can't have a teaching credential unless you pass an FBI back, just a substitute, but for six school districts in the Rogue Valley, Eagle Point, Central Point, Medford, Phoenix Town, Jackson County Educational Service, SASTIC, the Southern Oregon Child Treatment Center. I'm wrapping up. And it was amazing, you know, and you get up and you go to work every day, and you get a paycheck. I don't care what kind of problems you've got. If you can get up in the morning, go to work, come home the end of the month or every two weeks and get a paycheck, I don't care how much physical pain you're in, I don't care how much emotional pain you're in, I don't care how much spiritual pain you're in. That paycheck is the biggest high in the world. See that? You go home, you cash it, and you go buy kids' shoes and fix their teeth. So, when I met Robert, about five years ago now, four years ago, he was so, I met him working in three other businesses, and as a food checker, well, you've worked all over town. And we always would talk, standing in line, we would talk about kids. He's a father of two children, a married man committed to his wife. He has two businesses that I know in this town. I go in there to get some pain relief. I found out that if I puff every other day, not every day, that's the key, because the synapses have to clear, right? Or like taking pain pills.
Can you begin to wrap it up, sir? You're out of time. Can you begin to wrap it up?
Yes, thank you. So, anyway, I'm here to support my friend, and for knowing that a product is clean and has been tested, and it's healthy, and so I appreciate your time. And my name's Richard Richards. If you ever need help teaching your kids how to read, you want to call me.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you. Public comment? Any further public comment at this time? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. I was asked to read this statement by Jesse Davis, who is currently the chair of our Cannabis Working Group that Mr. Durega had alluded to earlier. "The Delnor Growers Association supports the commercial cannabis interim ban as a means to the creation of a commercial cannabis ordinance that will allow local cannabis business to contribute positively to the economy. As a member of the County Cannabis Working Group, a group of thoughtful and intelligent people, I am optimistic about our ability to achieve quality results. I am proud of the progress we have made together. We are now in overtime, and the urgency of our project must be recognized as unlikely, in the unlikely event that the board is unable to approve a viable ordinance before August two thousand and eighteen, the DNGA is prepared to hand responsibility to the community via a voter initiative." So, I wanted to read that statement that Jesse sent to us last night for public comment, and any comments from the board at this time? Okay, very good. Do we have any motions from the board? Joel, you want to answer the question for Mr. Miller?
I did want to answer that question, and the answer is, after the forty-five days, it can be extended to ten and a half months, which gets us to one year, and then it can be extended one more year. So, the interim ban has a maximum time of two years. I'd also just like to remind the board, unlike kind of the way these are usually agendized, this will have to be read, the actual title, it's kind of, it's longer than the twenty words that fit on the agenda, and then if the board wants to waive the reading, needs to entertain a motion to waive that, and then finally to enact it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, any additional comments from the board? Just to be clear, this does not ban the use of over-smoking or growing of, for a personal use of marijuana. This is just simply an interim ban that allows the county to really understand what the impacts might be, not only to our ordinances, but also to regulate here in our backyard. And with the working group, we hope to get to that bottom line, which you do sit on, Mr. Durega. I appreciate your comments today, but I believe, I believe the efforts that we've taken with also having you on that working group will help achieve what you're trying to communicate here today, and I wish you to be a little bit more respectful for the board in taking what I feel is a fairly open approach to this discussion. Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I would move that we waive full reading and read by title only the interim ban on commercial cannabis activity.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second on the table. Any other motions? Seeing none, Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, to the ban.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move.
Wait, now we've got to do one more.
We have to, I would move that we approve and enact the interim ban on commercial cannabis as an urgency ordinance.
Is there any other language that needs to be in there, Joel?
No, that's what we just waived.
Yeah.
Go home, Mary Ann. The, an interim urgency, I would move that we approve and enact an interim urgency ordinance of the Delnor County Board of Supervisors imposing a ban on the commercial cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, laboratory testing, and sale of cannabis and cannabis products while the county considers comprehensive local cannabis regulations. Is that what you needed?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the table. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmings, excuse me, Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right, item number thirty-eight, which is consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delnor. Authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state and/or federal governments. CEO Serena?
Those letters were actually on the general government today, or open meeting, and I have no others under this item.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, could we take a five-minute break?
You sure you didn't want to get the board reports right away? Okay, five-minute break. Was somebody shaking their leg up here at the end?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for recognizing that. All right, thank you for recognizing that. We have recess for five minutes or less, as soon as our clerk gets back. As soon as our clerk gets back. Coming back from recess on item 39, which is receive other brief reports or announcements relative to the county, Delmarque programs in progress, and committee reports on two-by-twos, goal committees, et cetera, et cetera. Supervisor Berkwitz, why don't you give us an update on what you've been doing for the past month?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The highlight of the last several weeks for me was the CSAC conference. During the Reconnection Breakfast, our graduating class of 2016 was able to connect with other first-year supervisors to exchange the pluses and minuses of our first year. One of the best workshops I attended was the one called Charting the Course of Frostbite: County Innovation and Partnership. The main theme was that failure of imagination is our biggest risk. Basically, they were saying that we should not think out of the box, but think that there is no box. If we're not thinking and acting creatively, then we are doomed to failure as the world passes us by. Another workshop that was worthwhile was the seminar on criminal justice reforms where Supervisor Gitlin was a panelist. During the conference, Supervisor Howard and I met with Vincent Mamano, the Federal Highways Administration District Administrator. He gave us a progress report on last chance grade. He also agreed with our approach of working on many different avenues to get a bypass, including lobbying the administration in Washington DC for infrastructure funds and working to get Congress to include small counties to be included in any legislation that incorporates a bypass to last chance grade. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Berkwitz. Supervisor Cowan?
Thank you. Well, in the last month, I've had two solid waste meetings since our last meeting, and we just continue to look for solutions on a recycling problem that we have in Delmarque County that I've been discussing for the last 11 months. It continues. I felt like we made a little bit of progress yesterday in moving forward on some things. I attended a Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, had a fabulous Thanksgiving weekend with, or week with my family. That was awesome, to get away from it all. And after that, went straight over to Sacramento to the CSAC annual meeting along with all the other supervisors. It was a week filled with meetings, workshops, and networking. I find the meeting with supervisors from other counties very informative. I also make sure that when I am in Sacramento, I take extra time for other meetings outside of the busy schedule that they give us. I had a very productive week. Chair Howard and I met with the State Director of Caltrans, Malcolm Doherty. He's always been open-door policy to us, which I appreciate. We discussed Caltrans going back to California Transportation Commission in the spring and asking for more money to continue the environmental studies. They are the ones who gave us the $5 million last May, so we will be going back. We also had meetings with Paul Schneider, the COO of Federal Highways, along with Vincent Mamano, the Division Administrator for Federal Highways. And again, we discussed all the different pathways that we'll be needing to take looking for funding. Funding is not going to be coming from one place. It's going to be coming from several places. Supervisor Hemmingson and I got to meet with Mitch Weiss, he's the Chief Deputy Director of California Transportation Commission. The reason for that meeting is kind of to say thank you. We wanted to say thank you for the $5 million, but we'll be coming back in the spring for more. Also, I found that when Federal Highways was up here last year and Caltrans, I think it's really important for these people to see. We can talk about last chance grade all we want, but until they physically see what we're dealing with, I think that makes a big impact. So we also, Supervisor Hemmingson and myself, extended an invitation for a couple of the commissioners to come down, along with the Deputy Director and/or the Director, and we're hoping to see them up here in the first quarter before we go to them asking for more money. Oh, I got to see Senator McGuire while I was in town at the women's reception. They always seem to put on a little bit more extra things for us women, which I like to take advantage of. That was the first day. And then, as stated before, Chair Howard and I had a meeting with Assemblyman Wood, which I thought was a very good meeting to start that conversation of what's going on with our medical and our health issues here in Delmarque County. All these meetings are very important to keep the communication flowing and to talk about solutions for not only last chance grade, but all our different concerns in Delmarque County. I want to congratulate Supervisor Hemmingson. He is the new co-chair to the California Coastal Counties Commission. He's going to be a great representative, coming from Delmarque County, to represent the northern counties or the northern coastal counties. And then I also attended a Visitors Bureau meeting after I got back. We set out an RFP early on in December or November, and we just got back about six different proposals from different advertising companies, hoping to promote Delmarque County and to bring up that next new visitor. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Had several meetings. We've been gone for quite a while. Had a meeting with the Director, our AG Director and Animal Control person, Justin, as well as the Humane Society and CAO Serena, on some discussions about some animal control issues. Had Thanksgiving with family over in the McLeod area. And then went down to the CSAC conference, as everybody's been talking about. A lot of stuff going on down there. Always bring something back, I think, that's really important. Of course, the networking, the Downtown Streets team, they put on a, or they were part of a panel, had some very interesting thoughts there. As was said, I went to the Coastal Counties meeting, where I was selected to be co-chair. Most of the discussion there was about sea level rise. Have had some discussions with Heidi Constle, Director of CDD, making sure that we're on board with that. And also some great presentations, Dr. Mary O'Hara Deveraux, on her Global Forsight, I thought had some very, very interesting things to say. Also, in the Criminal Justice Reform Meeting, Jerry Powers, I think it was, has a system called VMO, and I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but basically use an Android phone, and you can get all the information directly on that phone, not for the public, but for probation officers and law enforcement, that type of thing, where they can get a lot of information on people that they may encounter. So anyway, I thought there was a lot of interesting stuff there. The, while we were there, Supervisor, Chairman Howard and I went over and had got a meeting with Charlton Bonham, Director of Fish and Wildlife, as well as Stafford Lehrer from the department also. I'll let him get into it deeper if he wants, but mostly we were talking about the elk management plan and really the lack of communication, and how we'd like to see that go forward. Working on some, some of those issues, a letter, a comment letter on the plan that they've got out there now. I also met with the, oh, as Supervisor Cowan said, we met with Mitchell Weiss, Deputy Director of California Transportation Commission. Anyway, then got back with that, had some meetings, had a, with Chairman Howard again. We got back, had a two-by-two with National State Parks, met the new National Park Supervisor, Steve Metz. Had some discussions there, talked a little bit about the hostel down in the Klamath area. Had a, then, after I got back, had an RCRC meeting, so headed back to Sacramento. A lot of stuff went on there, pages and pages of stuff, I'm not going to go through all of that. And then, when I got back from there, had a Delmarque Local Transportation Commission Finance Meeting, where we talked about the audit review. And today, at 3:00, we'll be going out to the Grange for a little media opportunity about the Pacific Shores Cleanup and Monitoring Station. And I would like to give thanks to Heidi Constle on our NIFW grant, as well as Sheila Ballant from the Forest Service, and all of the people on the Smith River Collaborative. Everybody did a great job, and really good to see that go forward. And that was it for me.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, thank you. I'll try to be brief. A lot of the things have been said before, but we met at our Redwood Coast Transit Authority, and what came out of that meeting is the authority reversed itself and reinstated the bus stop in front of the Jet Smith Center at Safeway. I had some concerns, there were some, as the management also said, that there were some traffic issues, and passengers were ingressing, ingressing, and, you know, there was a possibility of accident, but there was no evidence to show that. But we were back there, and that's the convenience. The authority acted in that regard to reinstate the location of the drop-off and pickup spot in front of the Safeway for Redwood Coast Transit. Our Emergency Medical Services Meeting met in Eureka and discussed the regional trauma plan. No changes to report. The group, our agency, conducted elections. We got a Sutter Coast update on the Crisis Stabilization Center, which is due to open in the fall of 2018, next year. Updated on the devastating fires in and around Mendocino and Lake Counties, and we approved the 2017-18 budget. Lots of community activities, including volunteering for the Interfaith Council. We set up some Christmas lights in downtown Crescent City, participated in the Thanksgiving Dinner at the Fairgrounds. And there's an interesting event that happened to me, actually, there. A situation happened to me, is a couple came up to me, and they were kind of sheepish about it, and said, Supervisor, I want to bring your attention to something. There's a man over there, he's talking violently, and he's wearing a trench coat, and we're concerned. And I said, well, first of all, thank you for taking that effort to come and actually talk to me about that. The sheriff was with me at the time, and we actually went over there and had a discussion. Turned out to be nothing, but this is a very different world we live in today, and we all have to be very vigilant. And what came out of it, and I say this to those of you who are watching on television too, if you see something, say something. Don't be embarrassed. No harm, no foul. So we all have to be the eyes of the community. It can happen anywhere. A terrorist activity can happen in Crescent City, it can happen in New York City, it doesn't matter. We all have to be very vigilant. So our board also, as you know, all of our members attended the CSAC California State Association of Counties Meeting, and I did have the opportunity to sit on the Administration of Justice Committee. And we talked a little bit about Prop 47 and Prop 57 and AB 109, which has put a great strain on our local law enforcement. But I had, I was on that panel to actually commend CDCR and its Secretary, Scott Kernan, for actually abiding by Supreme Court mandate to lower the population of the 34 institutions. And he did that, and he has to be commended. Now, there's a yin and yang to everything, and of course, it's put an additional strain on us in money-wise and how we deal with mental health issues of those who are long-term incarcerants. And that's an issue that we'll have to deal with on a separate issue. But the fact of the matter remains, 90% of the population of CDCR is ultimately going to come out. And they're going to come into our communities. And you cannot just say, throw them in the jail, and throw away the key, we don't care. They're all, these 90% are going to come out, and they have to be trained, we have to provide housing for them, we have to provide job opportunities so they don't recidivate. And Secretary Kernan shared with us the numbers on his recidivism rates, they're way down, and that's good. So the system is working. Now, we just have to figure out how to protect our public, and that's not an easy row. It's a very controversial subject, and one which I addressed with the Assemblymember just a few moments ago. It's not a situation that's going to be easily solved. As you know, Friday, December 15th, the last Panera flight will cease, will be the last one to Portland, and we await the news from Contour Airlines, hopefully sometime, first part of March, where new service to in and out of Oakland will commence. Also, I want to give you an update on the West Property Mobile Home Park has finally been connected to the sewer line. The last seven units will be connected in the next few days, I'm told. The project has been a very arduous one, and it's been a great example of cooperation between the city and our community development department, and they should be applauded. Spent a lot of time reconnecting with some family down south, and I want to wish everybody, it's the first night of Hanukkah tonight, first of eight nights, and I want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday season and Happy New Year. We'll next convene on January 9th. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. I'll make this quick, since most of the board members covered many of the topics that we're going to discuss, I just want to say thank you for the board and their attendance at CSAC. Delmarque County's presence there from all the board is very appreciated. It allows us to get out and have conversation about issues that are important. As you can see from conversation from the board, they just don't stay within the confines of the CSAC meeting. We are at agency offices, we are at our legislature's doorsteps, talking about the issues that are important to us. And it's a full-court press all the time with every member of this board. We all have our different ways of going about it, but those ways are actually gaining traction on many fronts, and it is very appreciated, the efforts that are being made. I want to close my statements today by reflecting on a 20-year-plus career of Dr. Thomas Pallador here in our community. I know it was abrupt to see his departure from Sutter Coast. A family man, raised three sons here, my wife taught his kids, a member of this community in just about every respect he could think of, and an asset. And we talk about economic development assets in this community all the time. Dr. Tom Pallador was a clear asset and economic driver to this community for surgical procedures, and it's going to be a tough loss to us. I wish there was more that could have been done on Sutter's behalf and how that was handled in his departure. I know his family really wanted to stay here, and it's tough to see him go. And I don't think we're going to be able to replace someone of his caliber here in this community very easy, that's going to have the buy-in that he and his family had here in this community. And to that extent, in recognizing that 21-plus-year career here as a surgeon in our community, I want to make sure that this board has some recognition of that to some extent. And I'm not sure how we could go about doing that, but I would request that the CAO for our next meeting, look at a way that we could recognize the Tom Pallador and potentially even his family and their years of service here to our community as a surgeon, because he'll be sorely missed. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. We look forward to seeing you in January.